I wanted to participate in public comment.
And your name is? He's on, he's on. Everyone on the phone who is not speaking, please mute your phone.
Did anybody hear the planning commission meeting? Dog bark.
Dylan, how would you like me to know what?
It was very hard.
Yeah, we, we need some.
Yes, I'm here for public comment.
I'm here for public comment.
Here, move.
Mike Hall, so here's a public comment.
Elena Swart here for public comment.
Jim. James Perkins here for public comment. Chris Shaper here for public comment. Diane Richards for public comment. Joanne Mead, you're for public comment.
We'll be to you guys in a minute. And please, if you're, please mute your phones.
How are you doing, Darryl?
Just about, I'm recording the meeting, so if you want to start, it's not, it's not online yet, so.
So I left and there was a few people still online that were, I couldn't hear. Do we have more than Shelley, Margaret, and Ed?
There's all the comments.
Yeah, Colleen, Bill, Diane, and there were a bunch of others, but I couldn't hear.
Okay, so do we know whose public comment?
Yeah, I think we're saying.
Okay, if you're on the phone and you are desiring to make a public comment, could you please state your name for the record?
You don't have to, I'm just, um.
Thank you, Diane.
This your table?
Diane.
Chris Shaper downriver.
Colleen O'Toole from Weaverville.
Michelle Coleman, public secretary.
Online. Yes. Okay, so we're going to begin, but we're going to change things just slightly. We are going to start out with our COVID update after we do the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Coons, would you leave this?
Could you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, with the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite, everlasting, eternal.
I remind the people on the phone to please mute at this time so we can conduct our business without delay. Thank you. So prior to the public comment, we will take a 1.4, we're moving it to the front. And for those of you who have public comment, I would ask that you listen diligently to what is said so you understand the current status of COVID. Thank you very much. 1.4, receive an update regarding the coronavirus COVID-19 in Trinity County.
Thank you, thank you, Chair members of the board, public. I'll go ahead and start, and I'm going to ask Liz to do a PowerPoint with the presentation for the different phases that we're going through and we're going to be moving into. And then we'll have Marcy come up and do the medical portion of this. But we've been in close contact with the state. Our employees and our staff have been working with the state through this whole phase one that we're in right now. Our stay-at-home order, which has been, we understand, very difficult for the public and for those that are not able to venture out to work and participate in what our community has to offer. However, it's been a recommendation of the staff the entire time not to violate the governor's orders. And the reason being, as we've already said, we've been in contact with the state through this whole pandemic and have been confident that we would be able to reopen through the governor's orders around mid-May. And it looks like our predictions were correct because from yesterday's press conference, we are going to open up on May 8th, which is this Friday. In order to do so, we had to be prepared with a plan which would allow us to mitigate the risk factors to our public and also essentially have a contract with the state on how we would monitor our phase in. Because we are at zero cases here and we're in a small region, we can participate in what's called the accelerated reopening. So we'll be able to offer more services and more, lack of a better word, freedoms to our residents. I do want to remind the public, because I have heard through many emails that we are violating constitutional rights, but I do want to remind them that we are not only, when we hold our hand to the Bible to swear to defend the Constitution, we also swear not only the federal Constitution, but also the state Constitution, which has our health and safety rights in it. So we are, we are bound by the state and a subsidiary of the state to follow the. We are bound to follow these. Now, the board has the authority to violate orders, but the recommendation from the staff from the very beginning is to please follow the governor's orders because we were confident that we would be moving forward by mid-May. With that being said, some of the issues that would have, would have, would have happened if we did violate the orders is funding not only for the county proper, but the entire county, the residents could be reduced or eliminated. We felt that was a risk that wasn't worth taking, meaning that there are, there's funding out that is going to be available for the next six to eight months for small businesses. Had we chosen to violate the governor's orders, those could have been rescinded. So there could have been severe consequences. If a county that has violated the governor's orders has a surge in cases, they may have a slower response by the state and could be personally liable for this, for these, for those cases. So we just felt it was prudent to hold the line and follow the governor's orders. And I feel we made the correct decision and appreciate the board supporting the staff in doing so. We will be opening up on the 8th with an accelerated plan. So at that time, I'd really like to bring Marcy up and she can explain the different phases. Is that Margaret?
Margaret?
Yes.
Either you're not on mute and you're addressing something else, or perhaps you wanted to weigh in, I'm sorry.
That would not mean.
Okay, sorry about that.
So I'd like to ask our interim director of Health and Human Services to present our, the phases that we're, that the phase we're in, the phase we're moving into, how we moved from one to the other phase, and also a PowerPoint presentation for local businesses to assist them to get certified as COVID compliant and move to reopening as quick as possible.
Good morning, Liz Hamilton, interim director of Health and Human Services and Office of Emergency Services. And Dr. Coons has kind of queued up for me. We have established a plan, and this is in coordination with, of course, public health is our infant command during this pandemic for our local community, environmental health, sheriff's department, Office of Emergency Services, and of course, county administration.
We're having a technical difficulty. We're going to put the speaker, we're going to bring your podium a little closer and put the speaker closer to you. He's standing in the back and they might listen to him more than me.
There you go.
Yeah, I hope. Okay, please continue, Ms. Hamilton.
Question pound six.
Okay. Consistent with the governor and state orders and state health orders, we have identified for Trinity County four phases that mirrors. We are currently at zero where in phase one, where there is monitoring, surveillance, local evaluation. This is a heavy lift. This is not something that I want anyone to underestimate the workload that has gone into phase one and the planning and all that is associated with public health, environmental health. To move from phase one to phase two, we're doing so with the governor's order to do so, which he has introduced yesterday statewide, moving to this phase two at a modified or reduced level. He's wanting to see phase two roll out incrementally. Of course, because as more foot traffic, more business traffic happens, we are at risk of exposure and we want to make sure that we're doing that thoughtfully and carefully for the health and well-being of all. The state has, Governor Newsom yesterday stated that phase two, as early as this Friday, could include retail businesses opening in a curbside delivery in manner. This is very narrow and limited. Some of the other pieces are opening up trails, allowing car dealerships to reopen in limited capacity, of course. A lot of the things that the state is allowing, we have not necessarily restricted to the full capacity here. And so I want people to understand that for recreation and trailheads, those have remained open, whereas in other counties, they have not. And so moving into phase two, the governor has allowed an accelerated rate for counties that have had either no or low exposure. And in the North State, we really see how regionally we are faring much better than our southern part of the state. For us in phase two, we are talking about low-risk businesses, and on page four, being able to assess how they can open safely with safety guidelines in place that will be reviewed by environmental health. Businesses such as manufacturers, retail stores, and small offices where telework is not available may reopen. We are asking that businesses that are currently able to operate with limited and are closed lobbies continue to do so. Businesses should encourage telework whenever possible and feasible for business operations. Return to work should be phased, provided appropriate physical distancing and ensuring that sick employees do not come to work. We want to provide and continue to provide as many services as feasible with limited contact. So online orders, with store pickup, limiting numbers of clients in a lobby or waiting area, and staggering appointments. Phase three, which will be again at the governor's direction, will include the higher-risk work environments that they have categorized as personal care, entertainment venues, sporting events without a live audience, and in-person religious services, including weddings. Stage four, or phase four, would be at the point in time where the governor releases the stay-at-home orders entirely and business returns as usual. I cannot tell you the estimate of when we think the governor will go to phase three or phase four. Where we are at right now, which is exciting, is the ability to move into phase two. For most of the state, that's going to be very limited. And then for counties such as ours, we can move to an accelerated pace, which Marcy will get into some more of that in her report out. What we are asking for businesses that are considered the low-risk businesses, as I've described, retail, which could include shoe stores, small business, small office, those type of stores, we're asking that they visit trinitycounty.org. And we're going to go through, on the main page, businesses will be able to, this is not up in live, this is just a sneak preview that will be released this week. But for the board to be able to see, for a business, they will be able to click on the link from their main webpage. They will register their business information. We are wanting to prepare and send guidance from the state to every business sector that's appropriate. They will load their information here, submit next page, and then it's going to walk them through guidance and protocol on what they should be considering and thinking of before they open their business. So we're going to quickly go through this, but of course, the primary issues are going to be signage, how they're going to protect their staff, which includes monitoring break rooms, cleaning routines, helping to send staff home that are ill, clicking through to the next. Their measures, each business's measures to ensure physical distancing, not only for their staff, but for the public that they engage with, measures to prevent unnecessary contact, measures to increase sanitation. And then there'll be an electronic signature. When a business has gone through and they are able to review the things that are being asked at a statewide level for CalOSHA and best business practices, they'll receive their submitted, their submissions, they'll receive a copy of this via email so that they know and can recall that they agreed to. And then this will go to environmental health where it will be reviewed. Upon review, they'll receive a compliance certificate that they can hang in their business window so that the public can be assured as a consumer, their goods, that they are compliant with the county and following the standards. We hope for one, that that provides the security that businesses need to draw customers. We want to see success in phase reopening. We want patrons to go confident in going out and spending money and engaging in the community carefully, safely, and in a socially decent manner. So we hope that that provides assurances for the public and for business. Ms. Anderson, where the environmental health will provide as much information that is needed per each business sector to safely reopen in their parameters.
Which phase is the resorts? We don't specifically call that out, but.
Liz, could you please repeat the question for the people on livestream as well as on the phone? And Darryl may want a picture of your compliance, so people will know what it looks like. So the question from Supervisor Groves is about resorts, and are they specified in here? And resorts remains a topic of discussion at a statewide because, why, as a small business, they would be able to potentially reopen with the safety parameters in place for in-county visitors. The state has not given further direction on inter-county travel throughout the state. And so we are waiting for further direction on that.
But under this, but under the county phase-in plan, they could go online and complete, complete the project, and we would certify them as COVID safe. So we are not enforcing the state ban on travel. So what we would be doing is ensuring that their operations are safe. If people around the state choose to violate the state order, there's nothing we can do about that except make sure when they're in the county that they're, they're at a safe business that is willing to remedy. So it's kind of a catch-22. So my answer, now that I go on the line, my answer is yes, they can open. But can, but, but would their operations, their operations would not violate any state order. Actually, the patrons of their operation would. So it would be on, it would be up to the citizens to decide whether they want to participate in non-essential travel.
Thank you.
Liz, Supervisor Finley, do you have any questions?
Supervisor Morris has a question, then I have a follow-up.
So does that, your, applies hotels and motels?
They specifically, I thought motels and hotels could open, but it's still a travel issue.
So. Kristi, I understand environmental health, I think if I'm correct in addressing this, it would currently remove our county travel ban and replace it. So that would make hotels, motels able to accept guests that are non-essential.
And would them be an open, they, of course, that hotel, place of business would have to follow the protective safety guidelines to keep our residents safe and their guests safe.
Correct.
And this will help them lay out guidelines to do that, I'm hoping?
Yes.
Okay.
Very detailed.
And then in terms of, in yesterday's announcement, there were two phases of phase two. My understanding, and CSAC has been working very hard on trying to get regional acceptance from the governor as well as small counties, as CAO Coons described the situation we're in. So we could kind of move the second phase two up, is my understanding, because of our situation. And so is there anything we should know about that? I mean, for instance, it calls out retail curbside only. I don't see a reason, if there's distancing going on in phase two for retailers, that they couldn't open completely. I'm going to use the bookstore, for instance, or the gallery in my district. As long as that business owner kept this safe distancing and protocols and, let's face it, unless it's a huge day of business, Fourth of July weekend, Thanksgiving, they're not going to get a ton of people in their business at one time. I would hate to limit them at this point to curbside. And they would have to please monitor the folks in their, in their business. So am I understanding that correctly? There's some wiggle room to do that with?
Is that within the accelerated phase?
It's within the accelerated phase. So you're correct in that there, yes, your comments are correct. There are two phases that the governor described yesterday within phase two. One that applies to all, and then for counties with jurisdictions that can apply a request for an accelerated pace of unfolding, which Marcy will describe the phases from a public health perspective. I realize right now we're focusing on the business side of moving an accelerated phase two forward. However, there's a public health component, of course, we want to do this safely. And so I want to give Marcy a chance to unfold some of that, and that might answer additional questions the board might have.
Absolutely, and I appreciate both paths we have to take in consideration. So, all right, I will hold more questions till Marcy gets up.
So Liz, real quick, could you reiterate on the reopening of Trinity County on the draft that you presented to the board? When that will be available online, as well as when the COVID-19 business plan, when you expect it? And before you do that, I just want to thank you from the board. We realize that a lot of times people get baptism by fire up here. Yours was fire under COVID. We had a wonderful director, and as she exited, this was in its infant state. And we realize the work that the whole team has done, but we know you were also taking a brand-new hat, per se. So we just, we thank you, you've really stepped up to the plate, and we appreciate, we know this baptism by COVID was difficult. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. Our team has worked seamlessly, a countywide team, and, you know, I am from here, I'm invested in this community. I know what it means to our small businesses to be able to reopen. This doesn't fall lightly on our collective team. We want to manage this safely and consistently with the states and federal governments. And so I appreciate the support that Dr. Coons has offered our team and the support of the board. I understand the frustrations on either side. I understand why businesses want to reopen. I understand why a large percent of our demographic here is potentially terrified of reopening and folks coming into town. And so it's a balancing act on both parts, and we want to do the best that we can for all people. We allow freedoms, you know, to return because we want those freedoms to return. But we have to be able to monitor the health and well-being of our community at the same time, which I know that you all want to do. And so to work efficiently and quickly as the state is allowing us, I'm delighted that we have an opportunity to participate in an accelerated phase reopening. And we hope that that continues, the phases continue to unfold safely, you know, that we don't just stay at phase two indefinitely, that we move quickly as well. So with that.
And the expectation of?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the expectation of this is once, you know, we wanted to gather input from the board of supervisors, have the chance to hear public comment, and then when our health officer approves this, it will be posted.
Thank you.
Public, everybody on the phone, please mute your phone. And Kelly, I know you said that you were the only one with an open cell, but somebody out there has a cell on, and we can hear honking and conversation. It makes it very difficult to govern. Please mute your phone.
Good morning, Marcy, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to update you on the COVID response in Trinity County. As things are changing very quickly, unfortunately, I've committed this to memory, so I'm going to be referring to my notes quite a bit. As you know, we've tested 93 individuals in Trinity County, and of those, there have been no positives identified, and there are no pending tests. It's important to note that 93 tests from the beginning of March till now represent one to two, to a maximum of three persons per day being tested, and that is insufficient for us to be able to surveil the activity moving forward. And I'll go through some of our plans to address that. So as you know, the California Department of Public Health has expanded the testing guidance prioritization. This was released Friday, May 1st. So tier one now includes not only hospitalized patients, but also symptomatic and asymptomatic healthcare workers, first responders, including law enforcement, public health, and social service employees. This tier also includes now symptomatic and asymptomatic persons over the age of 65 years or any persons with chronic health conditions that put them at risk for severe illness due to COVID-19. Also, persons identified for testing by public health contact investigations and disease control activities in high-risk settings are also included in the tier one, tier one testing priority. Screening of asymptomatic residents. Screening of asymptomatic residents or employees of congregant living facilities such as skilled nursing facilities, including after positive cases have been identified in facilities or prior to residence admission or readmission to a facility. Symptomatic and asymptomatic persons in essential occupations, this includes utility workers, grocery store workers, and other public employees. And also in Tier 1, they've included other lower-risk symptomatic persons. Tier 2 includes all lower-risk asymptomatic persons, and Tier 3 includes community surveillance of asymptomatic persons as part of the community or regional surveillance program. As our OES Director Liz Hamilton and our CAO, Dr. Richard Coons, stated, the modifications this week allow some retail entities to open with curbside delivery, as well as the manufacturing sectors that support those entities. Governor Newsom has also laid out impact for particular geographic regions, including rural counties that either have no positive cases or a few cases, to accelerate some modifications within Phase 2 beyond those retail stores he identified. For example, implementing a safe restaurant, dining in while maintaining appropriate social distancing. In order for this to occur, the local Health Officer in each jurisdiction must attest that the county has the ability to mitigate and contain any subsequent outbreaks through the following: increased testing capacity. Initially, the threshold required is, is to test one to two persons for every 1,000 persons in our population. For Trinity County, that means right now, immediately, we have, we increase our capacity to test 13 persons per day, eventually very quickly moving to 26 persons tested per day. We have to have the ability to collect and monitor data. This includes testing data, hospital and regional data around surge capacity, and the ability to surge up to 25% of our normal inpatient capacity. It also includes monitoring of occupational exposure data and a framework to expand contact tracing workforce based on an assumption that for every positive case, there may be up to 10 contacts. This is a heavy lift. Health departments are, as you've heard Governor Newsom say, we're very good at contact tracing. It's foundational to what we do and what we're funded to do. The ability to test and quarantine vulnerable populations, and currently we're collaborating with California Department of Public Health and local partners to increase availability of testing and include private partnerships formed with the state to help us in expanding testing. Contact tracing goes hand-in-hand with that. I look at it like a testing, contact tracing, testing sandwich, so to speak, because you test to see what it looks like in the community, you expand testing to try to broaden your reach as you open things up to ensure we're not going to have outbreaks. And then you're going to contact trace those persons. If you have a positive case, you have to contact every person and, and monitor them for symptoms. All those things that are in place for that, and we can go into more detail if you wish. And then as a result of that, you're going to have more testing to test the contacts to ensure that they're not positive. And so that's kind of where we're at. We, we do have contact, I'm sure you've heard Governor Newsom talk about the army of contact tracers, the workforce that he's building up at the state level. He's worked in partnership with UCSF and UCLA to, to implement a training program for contact tracers. This is a 20-hour program with 12 hours of instruction online, and then he stated eight hours in person. My guess is that's virtual, one-on-one. And so we're, we're looking at accessing all of these resources to be able to respond to our public's needs as we begin to modify the stay-at-home orders in Trinity County. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Supervisor Morris?
So when you refer to testing, you're referring to just yes or no, not the?
Serology.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. The PCR molecular testing, that's the qualitative test that tells you whether in that moment you're positive or you're negative. The serology testing is very important for public health surveillance, and, and we're looking forward to that becoming available. We're ways off with that related to the test itself and capacity. The serology testing is really helpful because it tells us whether a person has antibodies. And there are windows of when that has to happen, and, and then what it means. So Stanford University is conducting a study right now using ICU staff persons as a cohort to look at, we need to determine, not just if they have IgG antibodies. IgG is, is what shows you the antibodies when an illness is passed. And there's a point in time that that has to occur. So it takes about two to three weeks for those antibodies to mount. And so what they're looking at, number one, is what does that look like? And, and is it unique to COVID-19? But also, how do we determine what's protective? In other words, if they have these antibodies, what threshold becomes protective? So there's still some things that are unknown, but there's a lot of research that's catching up, and I'm, I'm.
Then get it on the phone.
I'm very hopeful that that will happen very soon. And so we talked about testing in Trinity County. It's the collection, it's the ability to collect a specimen, because we don't have a high-level capacity in Trinity County to run tests.
So, so I want to follow up. I run into a reasonable amount of people that, that they've had this already, that in December and January, they were very sick. And so they're not worried because they've already had it. How do we get them tested to see if they did have it? Because my fear is, is that they're going to be overpop if they've already fought this off, and it was some other fear that they have.
Right. And the challenge Supervisor Groves, is that we, we don't have a clear answer to that right now. What we do know is, what we do know, however, is the Health Department, in consultation with the state and, and Dr. Coons and our OES, we are ensuring that we have the capacity that if we have outbreaks, for whatever reason, that we can respond appropriately. That's in the now. We have the ability to test in the now if people are positive or negative. I anticipate at some point in the future, the capacity to do serology testing and identify those that are immune is going to be really important in that particular scenario you just laid out. The other element that's very important is the vaccine. So as we stated in our press conference last Friday, health experts state this virus is going to be around until one of two things happens. It either infects 70% of the population, they become immune through infection, or they become immune through vaccination. That is what drives the public health system here, to do what we need to do to try to prevent that from happening. And so, point well taken. And we're really, 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 really hoping that the research bears out the serology test and makes it more widely available. Part of the problem right now is because it's a statewide pandemic and a national pandemic, a lot of the resources have been taken up by counties that have large community spread and ongoing outbreaks that are continuing. So we're trying to work with our state, we're not trying to, we are working with our state partners to ensure that Trinity County, our little county, gets our needs met as much as other large counties that have outbreaks. Even though we do not have outbreaks based on our testing, we still have needs that need to be met, and we're going to make sure that that happens.
John? Mistress Supervisor?
It was answered.
Okay, Supervisor Morris?
So it sounds like the four points, surge capacity, PPEs, testing, what else did I miss? Tracing, contacting. We're kind of in good shape is where we're at, if I heard you correctly. Yes, I, I'm not going to be overly optimistic because I'm still relying on partners. We have a meeting this week with our clinic partners. A lot of our testing capacity will rely on our clinics. At this moment in time, one of the issues we just resolved working with the state was that in the clinical setting, most of the testing done for diagnostic purposes has to fall under certain CPT or code so that they can bill insurance. With COVID-19, they've changed those rules so providers can bill for testing of asymptomatic persons just for the absolute, just because it's a pandemic. So they will get reimbursed through insurances to do that. So there's a lot of nuances we're working out to stand up our capacity utilizing our clinical partners. Our hospital lab does have an analyzer, and they have some test kits that they can do testing on, but there's, it became clear from the state that we will not likely get any more test kits like that from Abbott that provide us rapid results in our hospital lab. It's just not going to happen due to capacity and other needs. So we've talked with the lab and asked them to, you know, prioritize those tests for someone that they may need, may need to know right now, if it's a hospitalized person, and they're really concerned that they are positive and they may have infected healthcare workers, that'd be a great example of what that test would be reserved for. So there's only 12, 20, excuse me, I think they have 22 left, so. With the, the new testing centers on each side of us, Shasta and Humble, that will come into play and help us as well as we move forward? Yes, Supervisor Morris, thank you very much for that. So what we're doing is we're really putting together a, an innovative strategy that's unique for our county. So on the one hand, the people that have the means and the ability to access the Optum testing site in Redding, we're going to ensure they have the information they need to do so. The phone number to make the appointments. The turnaround time for appointments seems fairly quick at this point in time. We don't see any problems with that. We'll see what happens as we go down the road. It's fairly straightforward. Those testing sites collect the specimen. They do not run the tests. They have the ability to collect many specimens. They can do 132 specimens a day and then transport them to labs. So we're making sure that there's lab capacity to run those tests in working with state partners and local, regional partners. And so in that capacity, we're looking at our firefighters. We're working with our forestry to get firefighters there and be tested that are coming into the county. We're also looking at, for example, where, through one of our CMSP grants, we're looking at equity in testing. So those, those community persons that may have limited resources, we're purchasing, for example, the grant will purchase gas vouchers to ensure that people have the ability to get to testing. Our clinic partners will be huge in that, in that effort as well. And so looking at, looking at, okay, so what's the strategy for testing our inmates? That's something that we know needs to happen. We're not sure how we're going to do that yet, but we're going to be working with our jail commander to see how in fact we can do that. Because what we need to do is really make sure that we're testing high-risk individuals in congregant settings, because those inmates are high-risk individuals in congregant settings. And we want to make sure we understand their clinical picture around COVID-19 to protect our, both the inmates and our staff in the jail.
We're getting a little bit of feedback, and I don't know if it's from the speaker or that, or from the COVID phone. Another reminder to put your phones on you, all those that are waiting to speak on public comment, you will be called on. Thank you. Mute your phone. It might be the little bit. Supervisor Brown also had a question?
Just wanted to ask if you're confident that our state resource support is sufficient enough for our current position?
I don't have a clear answer for that yet. I, I can tell you that they've been very responsive when we've elevated our concerns up the chain to our legislator and our assembly member. We've been in, we've been in contact with the testing task force directly, and we were given, this was yesterday, and we were given a lot of information and insights that can help us. And so the, the problem Supervisor Brown is the fact what's available based on the landscape in California around this disease. A lot of those resources are being taken up, taken up around testing for the contact tracing on a grand scale that's going on in other communities, you know, in the Bay Area. So the longer we can kind of mitigate, this is all about mitigating and containing as we open up our businesses moving forward, trying to still buy us enough time to be able to put those things in place if we need to respond on a grander scale. And we are working with, we do have their ear, and I anticipate that we will get to help we need.
So Marcy, I don't know if this is for you or Ed, if you're on the phone, and maybe not a brief today, but a question going forward, one of the concerns is the PPE, the personal protective equipment for our firefighters. And if, at a later point, you could bring this status back. I know that the federal government is making a push to provide those, but it'd be nice to know. We've had a lot of volunteerism and social media providing specifically the mask for the firefighters throughout the county. So at some point, it'd be nice to know what we have and where it is for our firefighters.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. We are, the supply chain for PPE has begun to open up considerably. We're working with our first responders, TCLS, and a variety of other partners to ensure all those in essential services have sufficient PPE. And so we continue to do that. And I don't know if Ed has anything he wants to add to that?
We're still struggling incredibly. I received a text from, from a department head that, for feedback from people that don't have their phones muted. They have to.
Well, let's, let's finish with Marcy, and then if you can text Ed, that, that's a future thing. I don't need it today. I'm just putting it on the radar, and I appreciate it. And so I think if we can go ahead and conclude with this.
What we'd like to do is bring Liz up, and what she can do is just kind of summarize of.
Liz or Chris? Okay, Liz.
Yeah, yeah, and kind of summarize the opening process, because we're hoping to be open within the next few days.
I still have specific questions I was going to wait for, so.
Maybe Liz will answer before we ask.
Or we can just open up the questions to all three of us, and that, maybe that'll answer the.
Well, does, does Liz have more information to offer to us before I?
Can we more, summarize what you, what the, what the plan is, how we can get the certifications out to the public, things like that?
I mean, I can just roll through a ton of questions.
No, that's okay. We're here as long as you need us.
If that's okay, Chair.
Well, Dylan, I know you have a presentation. Are you good?
Yeah, we're all, no rush here.
Okay, thank you so much. Those people on the phone, we're going to have to turn you off and have you redial in if you do not mute. We have department heads and staff that cannot hear because of all the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Liz.
Thank you. Once again, thank you for letting us present to the board. In summary, we are positioned to move to Phase 2, the accelerated version that the state has provided. We will have documents posted on our trinitycounty.org website and a place for businesses to go on and start registering and seeing what they need to do to safely open up with a stamp of approval from our Health Department and Environmental Health. Christy Anderson can add to that how she wants to. She's been very busy, very engaged with community and business and helping for the existing businesses that are open to help keep them safe and patrons safe, and will continue to do that work as we unfold this more. I don't have a date on when this will be released, but we will, if your Office of Emergency Service, we will put out a press release once we know that our website and all the forms are correct and, and approved.
Hold on a second. Did you want to add to that before we start taking questions?
Well, just in anticipation of the question, the stores being able to allow customers into the store, again, as we said, that will be the accelerated and on a case basis, so that will be part of the website. They do a risk mitigation, and then we'll be able to, we'll have the authority at the local level, I don't think at the state, at local level to make the determination, is that correct? Okay.
So Supervisor Morris, and then Supervisor Groves.
Thank you. So our local level, according to that portal, if you will, will determine if a store can open? Did I hear that wrong?
Yes, because there'll be some, there'll be some. Yes, because there'll be some, there'll be some businesses that will be not in phase two, it'll be in a phase three, it'll be actually listed, where at our level, because of the size of our community, because of some of the constraints we can put on and mitigate, I believe we'll be able to open. Now, I don't want to say for certain, go ahead and discuss one that I, that we discussed in the past. I'll say the gym. In other areas, that is in phase three, there's no question, there's no way, because most gyms have 100 to 200 people in at a time. Ours be able to mitigate down to 10. So that's something we could consider in our phase two. We may have to negotiate with the state a little bit, but we can mitigate the health risks at our gym because the amount of people that we can, we're going to allow in at a time. Where a gym, say in Redding, where there's 75 people every day at five o'clock, there's just no way they can keep up with 10. So that's one of these type of things that we hopefully will have the flexibility in our area to open up more than, more than other areas to be able to open.
Okay, so it is to their benefit to, once this is released, to jump into that portal, start putting in their information. They can make the case, yeah, we can stay within these parameters and stay safe off our customer safety and open, if I hear you correctly.
Correct.
That goes for all businesses, obviously.
We encourage them to do it immediately.
And so currently, we have restaurants that are just takeout. If I read or remember correctly, phase two allows for some in dining with provisions? Is that accounted for in this portal to, I'm a restaurant owner?
Correct. Phase two at the state level, they had discussed, you know, several times, reducing dining to half-capacity, having tables spaced, so where you come in and cohort, you stay together, you know, servers wearing face coverings, et cetera. I mean, the list goes on. We come into food and service industry, there's a lot more on the checklist with sanitation and the way that you engage your public. And so those are outlined on our website, they'll take you through if you are a food and beverage industry. Again, the guidelines and best business practices are listed.
Okay, and then so stores, they could likely just open and have a limited amount of people that actually come in and do curbside as well if they choose to for their customers who may feel more comfortable doing curbside at the moment.
Correct. It would continue to be recommended for businesses that can sell their products online or do curbside, that would be the preference. Limiting the store patrons is an option in phase two.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think the smaller businesses in my district, we're going to have, they're not going to get the volume they need in terms of online, you know. Bigger stores that have been open certainly have put forth some safety practices. Some have done it better than others. I've gotten, I've received a lot of complaints. Certain essential businesses certainly weren't putting together the safety protocols. And so when you scale down to, I'm going to say micro businesses, which many of our small, really small businesses are, that are the mom and pops on our streets in, in any part of the county, they're not set up to pivot into an online situation and get the business they need. They are going to need some walk-in as well as curbside if that works for them as well. And then is there room on this portal if, if a certain industry sector, whether it's the restaurant or just regular retail, to offer suggestions? Hey, we can do something a little different that would meet your guidelines, but we feel we could do this better in this scenario. Is there a way for feedback for them to offer that?
That is a, an excellent suggestion that I'm hearing. I think the best way to navigate those case-by-case scenarios is for those businesses to work with Environmental Health directly. I think that that's a great partnership that should be there. I think there's some room for innovation and creative ideas on a case-by-case basis.
And I'm wrapping up Chair. So in theory, we're looking at most retail to be able to open by Friday. I'm kind of making sure I'm hearing everyone correctly. There is certainly an opportunity for the gym to open, given our situation to some degree, likely, you've got, they've got to jump through the portal, if you will. And then the other retail, I don't know if has been considered. I understand salons are in phase three.
Correct.
A lot of our salons also are retail. They just don't do haircuts. So has there been consideration about those for someone to just walk in? They have a, I don't know, favorite shampoo they buy from their salon person. Can they go buy that still and not get their haircut? Or when can they get their haircut?
I agree that there is some flexibility for those salons that do have products that could be sold. That's a great example of where a curbside delivery could work wonderfully. Now, the reason why I wanted a personal care is moved into phase three that the governor has laid out is because you cannot maintain that six feet. And we really want to have those strategies in place and know that we have good community surveillance before, we're encouraging business that is in that close contact to be up and going.
I would, I would ask all of you, as you take this plan to the state, to again, using the same logic we're kind of using on the gym, our, our salons, at least in my district, don't have 20 people in their salon. Or our barber, you guys could tell me better what the barber chair is like, but they, you know, a lot of them have one person, one chair, that someone can come in, they can limit people coming in just to browse. If they have more than one chair, they can stagger those appointments. I think there's a way to make a case to the state to kind of accelerate that a little bit. I would put that on your radar and notes?
Yeah, that's, that's one we're really struggling with because with salons, it's not the number of patrons in the, in the business, it is the close proximity where someone's getting their hair done and it takes 45 minutes and they're within a foot of that person for 45 minutes. That's, that's one we have to figure out how to mitigate that. And I think Marcy is going to come up and.
Yes.
So let's hear from a health expert on the reason why.
I'm just Supervisor Morris, absolutely. There's, there's a million what-ifs. We, we know that. What we try to frame it as is if you think the issue with the care, the barber, the cosmetologist, they are in close proximity, they're within six feet of someone for longer than 15 minutes. Okay? So the key is within six feet, longer than 15 minutes is sufficient time to transmit from asymptomatic persons. So they won't know that the barber could have it, the cosmetologist could have it. Same with nail salons, you're within six feet. So they could have it and they can transmit it. Then this person goes in the community and remember, for every one person that's positive, they can spread it exponentially and you will have from one contact, you can have a cohort outbreak. They go back to their communities. And what's key here is really ensuring fundamentally the protections for those at greatest risk, okay? Who, you know, grandmothers, we have older populations caring for children. So we're going to have, and I'm not a fatalist in any way, but this is the real concern. So that is why we want to be really clear about the importance of that six-foot distance when we start to incrementally phase-open the county businesses. And I appreciate that and I'm glad you mentioned that 15-minute. I had not heard that 15-minute piece before. And so I understand that close proximity in those type of businesses and the need to, you know, I mean, at least some of them might be able to get moving, at least on the retail level, the curbside stuff. So I just wanted, since we don't have these conversations often on a daily basis with you, I just wanted to make sure we're throwing these ideas out. You guys are doing a great job, your, your plates are full, but I just want to make sure what I see going on, at least in my district.
Do you have any with along? I know Dr. Supervisor Grove and I have some things, but thank you.
Let me just state one last thing. Yesterday is when we found out that guidance about the 15 minutes. So I want to make sure, when we know it, we're going to let our board know and our population know. Thank you.
Supervisor Grove.
So I'm kind of more interested in logistics. You have a store Supervisor Morris mentioned that they could be up and running by Friday, but logistically, if they go on this website, which we don't have up yet, and Kristi's an army of one, how, how do we, you know, you're going to get 500 plans. How do we go through and deal with those plans and still do this in somewhat of an expedient fashion?
Kristi, can I speak to this? Thank you. So we have considered this and the website will really give the quick answers for them to, if you notice, it's yes, 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 but if they don't have those in place, it's going to be incomplete middle. Those complete middles should address all the safety concerns and we're going to get a little more in detail today so that it's not review this plan thoroughly, it's all the boxes have been checked, let's issue them the certificate of compliance. And then from there, if there's complaints or anything that comes up, those can be handled one by one, but we're hoping to get everybody ready and set to be able to start on Friday. And like you said, logistically, yes, that looks like a lot, but I think because we're making the, the website so thorough and making sure those boxes are checked, it won't be individually, oh no, this is a no, this hasn't been done, et cetera, et cetera. It should be a quick, here's the information, generate the certificate.
So this is really a self-examination?
Yes.
That we're relying on the businesses to do the right thing?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So real quick, I don't know who this is for, but Hay Fork Side Bar and Grills, that's big and I know a lot of our bar and grills really live on the bar side. The second question is our farmer's market. If you could address that now? If you can't, then maybe next time. But we're going into farmer markets and the farmers have been, you know, they, they've already planted their seed, they're getting ready to have the produce and their, the ware. So could you address those two things?
I apologize. So I believe that bars are still in that phase three and that does create some complicated issues with the bars and grills, like you mentioned, but I believe they're still able to sell to go if they do serve food. On the farmer's market, we are working closely. In fact, I have a meeting with Sue Corgan and addressing the farmer's market. Farmer's market was listed on the essential list in the beginning and they have came up with a great strategy to make it safer for customers. And I see them very similar, similar to a grocery store, you go in there and you shop, you know. So they're going to be meeting the guidelines that we want them to follow.
Hold on Supervisor Morris.
Your turn.
I'll, I'll go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification on bars. On the opposite end of the spectrum, I know our churches have been very cooperative and, and though they've been very patient, where do they fit in? In terms of, they've all been doing virtual Sundays, if you will, how do they move forward?
Yeah, and on that, the schools, just, yeah, the churches and the schools.
Okay, so starting with churches, the governor has been very clear that currently they're able to operate with their supportive services. If there is a church that is providing meals or other service that they can continue to do so safely as an essential business. As far as congregation and resuming a Sunday service that is included in phase three and again, just really encouraging the virtual services as they have been doing. And as soon as we get an update or a change in that, we will communicate that with the public.
And Chair, I think it's important to clarify that as we're talking about opening, there's a, a part of our population that is very fearful, as you've mentioned. They're older, they may feel more vulnerable health-wise. I don't think the state released 65 and over from on essential travel only. They can still operate in that essential. I think that's important for the public to understand that group can still operate the way they've been. And if I'm not mistaken, the state has also not lifted the ban on non-essential travel. So that doesn't mean we can go on vacation and wherever.
Correct.
Yet. Do I have that right?
And then to circle back on the schools, our health officer has prepared a letter that went out to the schools, closing the physical classroom learning for the remainder of this academic year. In phase two, the governor has not provided guidance, but they have discussed in phase two at some point, providing guidance, further guidance to schools and daycare facilities. So we're staying tuned to that information. And they have also introduced a proposal to start the academic year early, perhaps July. I understand that there is a lot of conversations that have to go with that. He made that introduction and hasn't really said much since then, so.
So do we know about graduations?
We do not know about graduations at this time.
Thank you. I think that wraps it up.
Okay. And one more question. I apologize. I didn't see your finger there.
So what is this phase two going to do to our 14-day self-quarantine for outside?
I'll have Marcy speak to that. The quarantine is in medical parameters.
It's our county issue.
Thank you Supervisor Grove. So the quarantine issue from a health department perspective has to do with ensuring people that, that are around others in our community that potentially might be positive and could spread the illness, not be able to do that. From, from a policy standpoint, an administrative standpoint, those are decisions that the county as a whole makes in consultation with the health department, the health officer, our CAO, our board. So I, beyond the relative quarantine issue from a public health standpoint that goes back to the, to testing, contact tracing, we, we have health officer orders that we will implement for quarantining and isolating persons necessary based on the testing and contact tracing. From a policy standpoint, I think that, that question really belongs with Richard and our health officer around what that's going to look like in the context of modifying our state home orders.
Yeah, I can, I'm not speaking for the doctor, but as Kristi alluded to, that would, if we lift our travel ban within Trinity County's right now, that would kind of contradict some of the, some of the new orders coming out of phase two. So it would be my assumption that the 14-day quarantine would be, would be removed. I don't know that for sure, but just looking at all the, all the evidence we have, talking to the doctor and what we're presenting, that 14-day would contradict everything we're doing right now. So my assumption is that 14-day quarantine will be lifted.
Did I brought up another question?
Sorry.
I have one more very.
Okay. So with what you just said, we might lift our own local order of travel. It doesn't mean the state has lifted there. So there's that contradiction, meaning how, you know, I don't want to give the wrong information out there, like come, come up, come up here, which we've seen already and our, I hear from our public that they are very worried about infection rate increasing with people traveling into our county. So I don't know how we manage that.
Our 14-day was more restrictive than the governor's. So what we'll do is we'll go back to the governor's orders, which they'll still have the non-essential travel, but we'll go down to the minimum of the state rather than be more restrictive as we've been here. So that's for that one. And one thing we do need to take into consideration and hope I'm not jumping lines here, this is Marcy's presentation, but with this, the, the public does need to understand that as we move in a more aggressive manner to open up, we do expose ourselves much more. And with the increased testing, the odds of positives increases. So all of a sudden, we are testing, what are we supposed to be testing, 100?
26 per day.
Yeah, 26 per day. And we have people moving about the community, there is a greater chance of receiving positive tests and there will be a number there that if we do receive, we'll have to tighten up our restrictions again. So with this, with, with listening to public and, and trying to take their concerns in and move forward as quickly as possible, we do run some additional risks.
So with that, I'm going to thank.
So with that, I'm going to thank you for the update. It's like navigating through uncharted territory, and at any moment, there will be a monsoon and to balance all that. So I know that the public announcements on Friday are going out, Dara and social media, and people are concerned, and people need to provide an income. So it is a balancing act. So I appreciate that. And we're going to go backwards now into public comment.
Do you have a comment on this side?
Well, it's public comment in general, but there was a lot of concern, and so in order to perhaps answer questions of public. And so I have four people in the public, and I know that right now we should be going into our 10 o'clock, but Margaret, unless you stop me, I'm going to go ahead and proceed with public comment, and then I think I'm going to move Mr. Dillon to the front because he's here waiting very patiently, and it is a wonderful presentation, I've seen it. And so I'm going to move him up. Margaret, is there any reason why I can't push back the county matters at 10 o'clock? Jay, so a public hearing at 10 o'clock, I'm moving back until we have completed our morning consent as well as presentations and proclamations. So now I'm going to open it up to the public comment, and I had four people. I begin with Diane Richards, public comment, if you're on the line.
Yes, I am. Do you hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks very much. I'm in possession of a letter that, from our North State leaders, and they sent to the governor, a two-page letter, and it sums it up that we appreciate your consideration of our request to reopen the economies in our six counties under local orders developed in concurrence with local county health officials. Thank you for your consideration of requests. And what's missing here is Trinity County. We have Sutter County, Yuma County, Los Angeles, Zahaema, honey, and many other cities. And yet we did not get that, and we have no cases. And I don't know if, with all this fear-mongering basically that's happening here over at risk, do you under, the national actors that we're relying on, they participated in a coronavirus project in the Wuhan laboratories in China where this originated. So I really do believe, and you are violating, yes, and you admitted, violating our rights to assemble, our freedom of religion, to congregate, to practice our religion, and one of your, what was, one of your officials was there today. Oh, we're going to work to restore your freedoms. You have no right to take us. And what's very ironic is that you can go down to Redding to buy pairs of shoes in Walmart, but you can't in Trinity County with no COVID cases at all. The irony of that, there's no common sense here, and we'll just basically run roughshod over our freedoms. And if you think that we have not have, in Trinity County, I'm pretty sure with January, I've interviewed many people that were quite sick in January, we didn't have the death streets. And in San Francisco, I also interviewed a lot of people, and they had it in February. There were whole businesses that were sick with flu symptoms, and they did not die. Wuhan had at least two flights, correct flights a day into San Francisco. I believe that was ground zero, and six seronosters were dead there. In fact, it's both 85 black masks, hey, about a 64 now. You have established immune system, that's the way it worked. And he shrugged and said, hey, it's okay, at work. He never even said for being sick a little, and he's back at work. We need to get our people back to work, or you can even go buy a pair of shoes. You can go buy cannabis, but you can't go buy a pair of shoes. For essential business, the branders that we have is an essential business because we need to work, and we have to go to church. I urge you to the other counties.
Mrs. Richards, your three minutes is up. Diane, I, thank you. And I would request that you send a copy of that letter, forward it to Dr. Kuntz and myself, so I can look at it. Thank you. Chris Schaefer, I have you up next. Are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you so much. Unfortunately, I was having a lot of difficulty hearing the presentation because of the feedback. However, so please forgive me if I ask some questions or make some statements that have already been addressed. My concern is that we've seen some essential businesses that have remained open, and as a person in a higher-risk category, I have chosen to stay at home as much as possible. But unfortunately, one has to go to the pharmacy or the grocery store, and I have seen so many people not respecting the recommendations that have been made. A great number of people do not wear face coverings in public. There are efforts made to maintain social distancing by some of the establishments that have been open. However, when those start to break down in the actual real world, I'm not seeing any intervention as far as, you know, actually approaching a person and saying, excuse me, you know, this is what we've got going here, and this is what we need to do. A lot of our businesses that may be opening, I'm very sympathetic with the issues that they're having as far as getting, you know, getting food on their tables. However, I think we also need to look at some of the physical environments do not allow for social distancing. Perhaps a very monitored number of individuals that would be in a store at a certain time would be adequate to resolve those issues. I hope that the businesses that are able to reopen are very diligent as far as following the plans and plans that have been set forward. I did not hear anything about masks being, if they were going to be mandatory in an indoor space. I hope they are. I know that Humboldt County instituted that for all indoor gatherings that, you know, in stores or whatever, banks, et cetera. And I think that's simply a respect for our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And I would encourage you to get on the governor's and the California Department of Public Health websites, and they're not mandating it in California on the mask. And Darryl Forsland YouTube hopefully will have today's presentation, so if there was something you could miss, as well as anybody else on the line, you can go back and watch it there. And I appreciate you closing early. And moving on to Colleen. Colleen, are you on the phone?
I'm Colleen Sullivan. Can you hear me?
Yes, Colleen Sullivan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thanks so much to all of the county employees who are doing a fantastic job of keeping us updated and informed and providing access to these kinds of forums. Really appreciate it a lot. Thanks to all of you. I just want to echo Dr. Kuntz's example of the gym as maybe a business that could open with precautions in place and be self-certified perhaps with the approval of the local entities. I've been going to the gym for a very long time, and Kelly has trained all of us very well to be clean and sanitary for years, and we practice that on a regular basis. And with the space that she has and the kind of sanitary practices in place, I think we could carry on in a limited manner and provide that service to those of us who are down there. Those are my comments, and thank you very much for, again, for providing this forum.
Thank you, Colleen. Michelle from Coffee Creek, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Somebody has, wait one second, we'll start you in a second. Out on the protest line, mute your phone. Please mute your phone. Thank you. Michelle, I don't know if you can hear him or not, but if you can speak loudly and clearly, thank you.
I appreciate having this forum online, but it's been very hard because people weren't on mute. So I have a few questions that might have gone over, but I just want clarification. I own a small resort in Coffee Creek. I want to know, did you say we can open as of May 8?
There were no dates given. That's the goal. That's the goal, Michelle.
You don't have any dates for resorts to open?
The May 8th is a soft goal. It's a G-O-A-L, a goal.
Okay. So what about this, is the travel ban going to be lifted from the county?
Yes, ma'am.
And we know when that is?
The, we're hoping that Friday online, there'll be information. We're working to put this information online, and then there will be a certificate that you will fill out, and the more yeses you have, the more easily environmental health will be able to push you forward. We realize that there are a lot of businesses all in line at the same time. Sorry you couldn't hear that.
So the form is not ready yet, but it should be online by the 8th?
It will be this week. It'll be this week, and the 8th is Friday. Yes.
Okay. And do you know if on the form, there are requirements, cleaning requirements needed, ulcer requirements, the cleaning cabins?
Yes, ma'am.
You can PCE clean with my employees?
Yes, ma'am. And what I would do is I'll defer you to Christie Anderson, who's in charge of our environmental health. If you could call her and have a private conversation, I think that would expedite your questions.
Well, I have tried and haven't accomplished that, but I will try again.
I apologize, ma'am.
We have, you know, the problem with us is we have reservations from last year, and I don't really know what to tell people right now. So, you know, we're pretty much booked for the summer, and I'd really like some dates to open.
Yes, ma'am. We understand that, and the team of professionals that Trinity County has put together has really been on the forefront, and I apologize that you haven't received answers back, but they have been swamped in, I will, Christie's here, she has seen me, we're acknowledging, and she will be in contact with you today.
Okay, I will call her and leave another message just to make sure that, so right now, we can't tell our guests that the 8th, that they can come on down, I guess, is what we.
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. But hopefully by Friday, we'll have some dates.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments that are on the phone that did not give me their name?
I didn't, yes, I gave you my name, but I wasn't on.
What was your name?
Joanne.
Okay, I hear a Joanne, and there was somebody else in the background at the same time?
And a Marga. I'm trying to mark.
Okay, I got a Joanne and a Marga.
Yeah, and Janice.
And a Janice. Thank you for being so patient.
I'm sorry, it's Julia. And Julia.
And Julia. Julia Baldwin?
And Bill Burden.
Hi, Bill. Okay, we're just going to go in the order that we received them, and I appreciate your patience as it's difficult to hear on the phone, especially when there's background noises and traffic and honking. So Joanne?
Yes, thank you. I would really love to thank everyone who's been working on this out of the county with response teams. It's just been amazing. And I don't know you, Marcy Jocantio, but you are my hero right now, you keeping a real health and science aspect on this whole thing. So I'm a business owner. I had a storefront that I closed last year downtown, and we still have a business together in downtown I'm waiting to be able to open. And I also go online, I worked to try to help revitalize the downtown, and I think I have a sense about the businesses, but I want, urge everyone to keep an eye on the tribe. It's not about finishing this door and opening that door, it's not exactly what business owners want. It's the ones who have stayed and recently have asked to open up, but they really want the county, quote-unquote, what's on.
Joanne, did we lose you? Joanne, if you call back, you have a minute and 50 seconds reserved for speaking. I don't know if we lost anybody else. We're going to go on and move to Marga. Joanne, when you come back on, if someone's speaking, just let them finish, if you can hear this. And we're going to go to Marga? Sorry, Joanne.
Marga from Trinity County Resort.
Okay, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just basically want to reiterate everything that was said to the person before Joanne. I came in just after she started, and I wasn't 100% clear on, are we opening the 8th, or on the 8th is when we're getting?
8th, May 8th is when Governor Newsom has allowed us to move forward. On the 8th, we will have an online application that the business owners can fill out, send back to environmental health, and then depending on your answers, will depend on how soon you personally get to open up.
Okay, and what website is that form on?
TrinityCounty.org.
I'm sorry, you better echo, Trinity County what?
Dot org.
Okay. So you think we will be open by the end of the weekend?
I don't know your personal business, and so it's hard to say. Christie's going to have to go through those applications.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne, did you get back on? No, we're going to go ahead and go to, I think it's Janice?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Welcome.
Okay. I have a real problem with people not being able to earn a living and, you know, provide for their families.
I'm Joanne.
Sorry. The Forest Supervisors has previously had a good relationship with the small businesses in Trinity County and Weaverville, and it's been a relationship of give and take for a while. And these businesses are now begging for approval to pay their bills. They're not going to be able to survive. They can rent on their buildings. You know, they're still having to pay utility bills, and they're not getting any income. And if they don't get the open soon, they're going to turn out like the recycling center and close permanently. And I don't think we want more businesses completely to be gone. It's crazy, you know? First of all, how do you protect public health? Well, it's, there's a lot. Many diseases out there are contagious, and nobody can see it, they're not outwardly obvious. And nobody thinks about those. I mean, they're sad, they're stressed, and in certain populations, those can be deadly. That's the type of disease. If an adult has whoopee cough and is around a baby, whoopee cough for an adult is nothing. They may not even know it, but it can kill an infant that hasn't had immunizations yet. And nobody seems worried about that. And you remember the age when it first went out with the HIV/AIDS epidemic outbreak? First, they said it's going to gain men. And next, oh, anyone can get it, all bodily fluids, that a lot of people can't. They said it was cheers, libidus, everything, you know, don't share utensils. And then, you know, so that's what the experts said, everybody believed it. And boom, what was it, two, three years later? Oops, we made a mistake, we're sorry. You can't catch it from getting off of their utensils or whatever. But you know what? The damage was already done. Many people refused to go with the new explanation from the experts. And there are still some older people think, that still believe it, that the damage is done. They can't. They can't take it back. And that's the, the state and federal experts, plus the world that would be born, are constantly changing their stories and beliefs. That kind of brings the credibility into question a bit. So most people.
Ms. Janice, your three minutes of public comment are over. I'm going to ask if Ms. Joanne is back on the line?
What, what, can I continue?
You have a minute 30 seconds remaining, ma'am. Is that Joanne?
The, the small business, we won't let it happen.
Oh, wait, Janice, well, is this Janice or Joanne?
I'm Janice.
Okay, Janice, your time is up. We, the phone dropped on Joanne, but she, not hearing her, I'm moving on to Julia Baldwin.
Hi, is that me tied?
We have open phones in the background. If you could please mic, especially if you're out on the highway. Go ahead, Julia.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Like everyone else, I want to thank you all for all the work that you're doing for surprise doctor Cruz. Um, and something's kind of set up a particularly annoying call, but I appreciate your work and your interest so that we still get to give our comments. Um, a couple of thoughts. So one is, as you can hear from some of the comments that were from the New York Facebook, and we have a conversation, there's a lot of panic, a lot of fear. There is a lot of misinformation out there. Um, I do want to make sure that everybody knows that voices that want us to make sure that we move, that things that we can move to protect our community.
Julia, are you on a speakerphone?
I am, let me get a microphone. Okay, is that better?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, oh, wow, that's interesting. Okay. Um, but there's a lot of voices out there that want us to make sure that we are data-driven, be science-driven, and lose the pace that's necessary to not only keep our community safe, but also to help our economy. Because beyond, if we have an outbreak here, whatever we think we're suffering now economically is going to be so much worse. And so being safe and living in a safe space actually is important for our businesses, regardless of how, of how painful it is to get there. Um, I have a couple of thoughts. So one is, I do want to help our businesses. One thought that I have that has been circulating, but no one's really taken leadership on it, is, you know, should we have some kind of committee or group or something that can help businesses pivot in the short term? Um, whether that be going online, just not a small task for a business to do, acquire help and probably, you know, some money. Um, but also, you know, should you provide different services for the next few months? Or should you, or face something completely different than the usual business model? And there's all sorts of ideas that are, that are taking place in other communities where businesses are temporarily pivoting to get some income. I'm not promising every business to do it, but I feel like there might be, it would be worth an effort to actually like sit down with each business, each industry, and figure out like what can we do in the short term to stay off some of these harsher situations? And then in terms of misinformation, I'm wondering if there could be a, a public service campaign? Um, I'm seeing even at the businesses that are open now, some of the business owners and definitely a lot of patrons are not following what's happening at the moment. And I think a lot of it is due to the misinformation as well as, you know, some of these passions that are starting to arise. Um, so the thought there, second thought is like, could we actually, could the, could the county fund some kind of campaign to, you know, to continue to keep people informed that have to stay safe? And that's it. Thank you again for all your help.
Thank you, Julia. Bill Burton?
Hello, can you hear?
Yes, sir.
This is Bill Burton.
I'm also.
Hello, supervisors.
Go ahead, Bill. We'll come back to you, Joanne. Go ahead, Bill.
Hello, supervisors. Um, I would like to state that I think this contagion is not advancing as much as some of the media presents. And what I think we can do here is look at, if, well, we can do a very careful, like it's like an experiment for California. As we open, and we should open, is what I believe we should do. And, um, and in this careful process, we will be an absolutely good data point for the state of California if we do not develop more contagions. Now, supposedly the test gets lots of false positives. And so I fully expect some false, some positives to occur, whether they're true or not. I would suggest that we don't check any positives we do get. Um, and then, um, what Chris was talking about with going to a pharmacy and stuff. Um, I'm, I'm in a place right now where it's open in pharmacies. I'm not in the county right now. I'm actually overseas. And I'm probably hoping to hear, you know, try to open. Anyway, overseas, they have open pharmacies and they are allowing you to use masks on auction. And the other thing they're doing is they're allowing you to take appointments to a prime individual, both either way. And, um, appointments for seniors that were people at risk individually at maybe early hours or mid-hours or each store can kind of create a, a, like that. So I'm just trying to say have confidence. And my experience has been the contagion sickness of this, after traveling across the world and stuff, hasn't hit me and I've been just doing the careful hand cleaning. It's really contested. Wanted to be in the most quick, uh, way of catching this. So we keep a good exercise and good immune system, everybody. In Trinity County, you can do that and we have a social space. That's what I would like to see, is have, have it, have it open again.
Thank you, Bill. Enjoy your travels. And when you come back, if COVID's here, we'll have to see each other after you are isolated.
Quite isolated.
Okay, well, I hope you and yours are well and healthy and stay that way. Thank you, Bill. Joanne? Joanne, did you come back on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have a minute 30 remaining. I'm sorry about that. We, technical difficulties on whatever in. Please start.
Okay, well, I'm in town. I'm sure most of what I did say did got through. So, um, I'm a business owner of downtown that I closed. I'm still waiting for, um, the oxygen in the camp.
Somebody's got us on hold. Sorry about that interference, Joanne. Continue. We lost you again, Joanne. Okay. Somebody has us on hold and your mute is on because you can't, you're not talking. But we can, we have all received emails. Supervisor Morris would like to read one into the record.
And I will have one also.
And, thank you. Does any of the other supervisors have one? Okay, thank you.
And Chair, this was, they sent it to me versus trying to deal with this phone business. So, dear Supervisor Morris, it is my understanding that the board of supervisors will be discussing proposed actions for complying with the state of California's stage two phase of the state's stay-at-home orders and lifting or modifying current stay-at-home orders from the, from Trinity County Public Health. I understand that many in this county are suffering financial loss during this time. I also know that aid to small businesses from federal and state sources have not materialized. Without adequate testing and resources, it may appear that the coronavirus is not in Trinity County. Because of that illusion, many business owners and others feel that this county should not be shut down. The governor and state of California had announced that the state has succeeded with stage one of the plan to reopen our state and are prepared to move to stage two. During the last 46 days at stay-at-home, I observed that perhaps only 50 to 60% of our population complying with mitigation measures. In addition, visitors seem to not comply at all, perhaps because they think if they aren't in their own town or state, it doesn't matter. In addition, I have not seen any official or unofficial enforcement on these measures. The US FSS, the USFS closed campgrounds in other areas, but there are no patrols or enforcement. We were asked to social distance and wear masks, but again, no enforcement by business owners or anyone else. In fact, employees are lax in complying. So my question to this board is this. If you are, if you open more businesses, what are your plans for enforcement of mitigation measures? Whether that is numbers of customers, barriers, or masks, or cleaning, or other restrictions? Visitors are already here in the county. They came from states and other parts of the state. Even if you believe we don't have the virus here in Trinity today, influx of travelers make that situation a moot issue. Thank you, constant court.
Thank you. Supervisor Brooks?
Yes, dear Trinity County supervisors. As a family business who has lived in Trinity County for 44 years, we need to rethink our position on staying closed. These are the facts. People are coming into our county from out of the area and not sheltering in place for the 14 days required. They're coming here as our reports say there is no virus. The surrounding counties have these stats on the virus, have opened up. Modock County, 9,000 people, zero cases, zero deaths. Sutter County, 31 cases, two deaths. Yuba County, 19 cases, one death. For the first time in my history as an innkeeper, I turned somebody away in need, which is a violation of the innkeeper law. I have two families call me this last Saturday in the middle of the downpour from Big Flat. They were camping and had a five-month-old and three other children and four adults in dire need of a place to stay and get warm. It broke my heart to tell them that they, we could not help them and they would have to go to Redding as no one was allowed to be here except essential workers. Technically, if they knew the law, they could probably sue the county, virus or no virus, for not letting them seek shelter in a timely manner. Yes, the virus is bad, but we are not acting in the best interest of the county. If you ask county residents and your friends, you'll find out the virus has already been here. I had all the symptoms but thought it was a bad flu. Please take all these tax, facts and weigh them against what's best for our economy, for the county. Uh, thank you, Ruth Hartman, President, Coffee Creek Ranch.
So, no more public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the regular board. I, I would like to ask Dr. Coons, the comment made about other counties that have opened up, could you explain the potential problems that Trinity County might receive or endure, I should say?
Yeah, um, the other counties that went ahead and violated the governor's orders could be subject to either reduction in, in reimbursements, could be in lack of services. As I said, we will have funding that will come not only to the county proper, but to the residents of the county to help the small businesses. Those could be reduced or eliminated. Um, and the big one, I believe, is if they have a surge in that area of COVID that they could be held personally responsible for violating the health orders of the governor.
So with that, I'm going to close public, oh, Darren, I apologize. I didn't see you.
No, that's fine. I just wanted, you're dealing with a lot of stuff with feedback and all kinds of stuff, but there are in, in excess of 30 people watching online, so, on the streaming. So there's a lot of people that are going through this process. Thank you.
So, just in public comment, you can hear the multitude. If there was a graph from zero to 10, there's somebody on each number. And to navigate and to govern a county and to administrate and to follow the federal laws and the state laws and to be cognitive of the fact, each and every one of us has founding members that have been impacted, whether it's grandchildren that you're homeschooling or someone you love who works in the health industry that can't come home because they're a central worker or our local law enforcements, the way they've even had to put together their teams. So the county has responded. The fact that we don't have any one tested with COVID does not mean that it's not here. We can't be responsible for people without, outside our county vote. But the people of our county, the citizens of our county have stepped up to the mark. And, and for that, we are grateful. We, we knew that this was going to be a marathon. It's not over yet. Um, we, we are sorry for all the inconveniences, but each one of us and everybody, every staff person, including the team members that are looking out for the best interest of Trinity County citizens, have all felt it personally. So we do understand, we want to be up and running. And with that, we are going to move on. And we're going to move things around a little bit.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So what exactly are we leaving this at? This plan?
On, uh, plan is to on the 8th be up and running online.
I mean, are, do we need to endorse this plan?
No, this was just an, they were just filling, telling us what was going on. It was, unless I am wrong, it was, receive an update regarding.
Marcy had mentioned that looking to direction from the board.
Okay, well, let me look at the backup. I, I have it as receiving an update. Uh, receive an update regarding the coronavirus. Uh, there was no recommendation from the staff. Marcy, would you like to come up and do you want us to do a formal vote? Or, I'm not sure. It's just on the agenda? It says receive an update and we've received several? Yes, Supervisor Finley?
The agenda item was very broad. I prefer you leave it like that. There's nothing else going on. I had to ask CAO whether this would be part of the item. So the public really was not made aware that we were going to talk about this today.
Other than receiving an update. And that's all we did.
We're going to talk about reopening or the plan.
That was part of the update. So I, I, I believe that Supervisor Finley is correct and it is on the agenda. And therefore, we have, we have not. It's not in our consent. If you would like us to authorize something, then I would have you contact Supervisor, or excuse me, CAO Coons. I just made you a supervisor.
I don't know if that's.
And I'll step on aside.
So Supervisor Finley is correct. We, we did not know until last night we were going to be discussing reopening because that's what the governor came out yesterday at noon, moving us to the phase two. So it was, it says presented on here, it has an update from where we were headed, which we discuss each week, we'll give, we'll give an update. Uh, this is very fluid, it's moved very fast. So that's why the presentation of possibly opening up much, much quicker was on today's. Uh, so what we're asking from the board is to give an update and just solicit input from the board as to what direction, if there's any further direction you'd like us to look into, staff. But from an action item, no, but we always solicit input from the board.
I think that you heard it from the public and from the board that we want to accelerate as quickly as possible while making sure and ensuring that we keep the public as safe as possible. I don't know how you walk that tight line, but Supervisor Brooks, did you have anything to add to that?
I will just say that I feel a little uncomfortable and I understand John's point on the broadness. But I do feel a little uncomfortable that this doesn't get an okay from the board at some point very soon. Because it seems to me this is our role to set the direction of what staff should go and without our endorsement or non-endorsement, I think we're exaggerating our responsibility.
Yes.
So, I mean, ultimately, we certainly gave feedback, but ultimately, it's the public health officer who's going to sign off. My sense is that we are slightly in agreement on moving forward and getting the website up as soon as possible so people can start moving in that direction. Because ultimately, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Coons, this is, a public health officer will do the final sign-off on this. They just wanted to see if we were totally against this or for it, or a variety of between.
Correct. If I'm correct with you. Yeah, the health officer will be changing his orders and accommodating for the, the phase two of the program, for the governor's recommendations.
Supervisor Finley?
What about a general statement saying that we unanimously support what's moving forward? And if we want, we can have a special meeting on Friday.
Yeah, yes.
Or so the phone and say, please move forward on Thursday.
And they're making more info.
Offers much support as, as Keith wants to put forward.
I would prefer the, the special meeting on Friday because the public has the right to complain to somebody and they don't have access to the public health officer.
Supervisor Coons, can you?
Supervisor again.
Supervisor, sorry. Tina, would you pull the board after this meeting, make sure that we're all available? And would, some of us might be on the phone. So, Dr. Coons, is your Friday open?
It will be.
Margaret, are you available?
I am. That works just fine.
Thank you. So.
I'm a little confused.
We're going to, we are going to have a special meeting on Friday and allow public? We are going to have a special meeting on Friday and allow public to have feedback on this specific item of receiving and accepting and moving forward on the accelerated lifting that the governor is allowing us to do.
Where are they gonna get that item information if people weren't joining us today?
We're gonna have to have it put together real quick for a special meeting on Friday.
And then, my other question, I don't want that to hold up the web portion application.
Nothing is being held up.
Okay, got it.
Nothing is being held up. We're moving forward, and then we'll bring this back to the board to allow, as Supervisor Groves said, for the public to have official input, because this wasn't in the backup.
Got it.
And there wasn't a action item. So, once again, thank you, and really trying to get to Dylan. And so, having heard no more requests or comments from the board, I'm gonna go ahead, and we're gonna move. Okay? We're gonna have to accommodate you as fast as we can. This presentation of 1.5, receive a presentation from Dylan with the Watershed Center regarding Trinity Community Protection and Landscape Resilience Project, Phase Two. As I mentioned earlier, I was able to see this, and I actually encouraged Dylan to come and present at the time COVID hasn't happened yet, and so this will be going online, and he'll be streaming, so just so you're aware of that. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. I'm gonna change the subject a lot a bit here. It's super important, unprecedented times right now, but as we know, fire season doesn't wait, and we've had some recent fires already. So, my name's Dylan Chee. I'm the Forestry and Fuels Program Director at the Watershed Center, the Watershed Research and Training Center up in Hayfork. We're a nonprofit organization, and I hope that some of you know about the Watershed Center and the type of work that we do. If not, I'd be happy to continue the conversation via phone call or email or something. As Bobby mentioned, I gave this presentation in the Trinity County Fire State Council meeting. It's a public forum for local land managers to gather each month and prioritize projects, talk about them, and try and collaboratively work together to complete them. I'll note, too, this is, as you see, this is a Phase Two project. Watershed Center just completed the first phase of this project, which started in 2017, and this all, you know, started as a kind of an all-land landscape scale kind of management initiative started by the Trinity County Collaborative Group in 2010. And so, this kind of initiative has leveraged millions of dollars in state and federal sources to implement meaningful fuel reduction work in Trinity County. Phase One of this project, we were successful in completing about 4,000 acres of treatments. That includes 2,000 acres of fuel reduction work and 1,000 acres of reforestation and some biomass utilization work. This Phase Two project was put together, we awarded it in March of this year. It's essentially just picking right up where we left off, increasing the scale, scope, and the overall impact of this project across Trinity County. So, these funds are for CAL FIRE. They call it the CCI, California Climate Investments. It's a forest health grant, and it's money from the California carbon cap and trade market, and it's money that's directly invested into low-income disadvantaged communities to do work like this. You have to have some type of greenhouse gas reduction benefit to these projects, either through reforestation of severely burned areas or fuel reduction to prevent large wildfires, stand-replacing wildfires. So, this is the point, kind of the overview of this project. As I said, this is an increase in the scale and scope. This Phase One project, we only did it with Forest Service, and as you can see, we have multiple partners on this project, including Forest Service, Sierra Forest Industries, the Trinity County Resource Conservation District, and Trinity River Lumber. Can you just switch it?
Technical problem?
There we go. So, we were awarded a total of $3.8 million. It includes some type of match from Forest Service, so the total grant is close to $5 million. The performance period is four years, so we have this money until 2024. You can see a map there of the project areas to the right. The kind of beige boxes are the general project areas. The black areas are kind of the specific areas we're trying to go to and treat. Now, we're not gonna treat all those black areas. We're treating a certain amount of acres in those areas. Those are just kind of our general focus areas. So, our partner is $1.7 million to Shasta Trinity National Forest, $1 million to Six Rivers, $300,000 to Sierra Forest Industries, $200,000 to ourselves to do scrap burning, $100,000 to the Trinity County Resource Conservation District, $15,000 to River Lumber. So, they're all, you know, funds coming from CAL FIRE, directly being invested into these corporation organizations to implement some type of project. I'll go over those projects, too. So, there should be some words up there. Well... Is it on there? Is it mic on there? Is it?
The shaded fuel break.
Yeah, okay, so it's... It includes four. I can probably go over... But it includes... Sorry, I didn't realize this presentation. Five is tank fuel reduction treatments. So, shaded fuel break construction maintenance. This is on strategic rooftops and roadways throughout Trinity County. Shaded fuel breaks, you maintain the overstore canopy, and you reduce the fuels in the understory to discourage crown fire and allow for easier kind of firefighter suppression and access. It also improves egress and ingress and egress for local residents in the case of an emergency evacuation. Plantations, this includes Shasta Trinity, pre-commercial thinning and plantations that were established in the 70s, all throughout, Middle Hayfork Plantation and West Side Plantation, they call them. Reforestation on old fire footprints, mostly in 2015 fire complex, and prescribed burning, both on public and private lands, and biomass removal and utilization. So, the total project will include, you know, 6,000, about 6,000 acres of total fuel reduction treatments. You can see the numbers there, 5,400 for Forest Service public land, 922 acres for private land. The treatments that we implement are listed there, hand thinning, mastication, hand pile, machine pile, tree planting, pile burning, broadcast burning, biomass removal. And as I mentioned, we have four years to implement this project. I'll just go through these maps quickly and talk about them. This is Shasta Trinity National Forest. This is the old car Delta footprint there, County Road 106. They're doing a 100-foot fuel break on either side of that road to reduce the hazard fuels and prep for plantings. This is also the CAR FIRE Delta maintenance project, so they're trying to restore this severely burned area, make it safe for travel, and allow for future planting projects. The Lake Forest Fuels Project, this is with Shasta Trinity National Forest, Tim Ritchie and Laura Graham. This is scrap burning around Covington Mill. The red units are the burn units. This is Weirville Community Forest Fuels Project. You see the treatments surrounding... We try and make these treatments strategic around the community to protect from wildfire threats. The red is for scrap burning that will happen over the next four years. The yellowish is thinning and hand piling, and there's some fuel break work on Rush Creek Road. This is the Weaver Creek. We're calling this the Tucker Hill Fuel Break. You guys might recognize this area. This is gonna be completed by the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. The point of this project is to allow kind of a escape route for residents in this area in case a fire starts on 2/99, they have another way to get out, and they're not trapped. So, we're gonna make a huge kind of landscape level fuel break there, working with those landowners to improve kind of emergency evacuations for the public. This is SPI, the Wells Mountain Fuel Break. This is top of Hayfork Summit here. They're doing about a 400-acre fuel break. Real strategic spot for them. As you can see, it's protecting a lot of their timberlands, but it's also a strategic spot for Hayfork, the Hayfork community, and they'll be implementing this hopefully next year. This is project areas near Hayfork. These are all... These maps will all be made available to you, too, if you guys want to look at them more. Those are just the treatments, some tree planting. I think I have a list, maybe I have some tree planting. This is the Kellogg FMZ, this fuel break that's around the community of Hayfork, they're gonna be doing scrap burning maintenance treatments in there. This is the Big Creek Ranch. The Watershed Center and CAL FIRE are working on implementing, you know, over 400 acres of scrap burning there over the next four years. This is the Thule Creek Ranch in Hayfork. Again, we're looking at trying to implement about 200 acres of fuel reduction or scrap burning treatments. Middle Hayfork Plantations, this is the PCTs that are happening in plantations, and I believe this is the Stafford Fire footprint, they're gonna be doing some tree planting. High Palm, got some more tree planting, got some more plantation thinning, and we have some scrap burning planned on Bar 717 Ranch right here. We'll try and burn about 200 acres there over the next three years. Picket Fire, fire reforestation, they're gonna be planting here, thinning and hand piling for future planting operations. This is Duba Kella down by Wildwood. Again, plantation thinning, hand piling, and some biomass removal here as well. It's gonna go to, hopefully, the Anderson biomass plant to produce some renewable energy. This is Southern Trinity County near Ruth. This is with Six Rivers National Forest. They have three main project areas here, First 48, Beaverslide, or, sorry, Kelsey Peak and Beaverslide. The red is gonna be scrap burning. The rest of this stuff is all shaded fuel break work for the community up there. And that's kind of the gist of this entire project. It's very ambitious. We're trying to basically double our acres treated on the landscape and using partners to complete that work as well. We rely on seasoned partnerships with the Forest Service, the Conservation District, and new partnerships now with SPI and Trinity River Lumber to implement these landscape level projects that protect our communities from wildfire threats. I think that's about all I have. If there's any questions?
Are there any questions, Supervisors?
Or comments?
I just want to thank you. I was really wanting a comprehensive overview of what's going on in the county on these projects, and thank you for mentioning the collaborative and their work to get some of this stuff moving. It was very helpful. Thank you.
Great, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem. Appreciate your time.
Really great. Thank you. So, Jeremy had to leave, so we're gonna go ahead and move it back. I'm just going to read the proformation.
10 o'clock.
Oh, thank you. It's 11 o'clock. We're gonna move forward to our public hearings, 10 o'clock at 11:05. So, if you're following at home, it's Item 3.1. Public hearings. Thank you, Dylan. 3.1, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution which requests the local agency formation commission to take proceedings for the formation of a community service district to sustain ambulance services. No fiscal impact. Does the board have any... Is there any public comment? Seeing that, I bring it back to the board.
So, what is... I can't recall. Did we do this, the same procedure the last time we made community?
They will... This is, like you said, Supervisor Groves, same procedure. It'll go back to LAFCO, they'll fine-tune it. The hope is that this goes back to the 201 election in November.
Okay. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
I'm so moved.
I'll say.
And we're gonna... It's a resolution, but on all their votes over the phone, so people can hear us, we'll go ahead and do a vote call. Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley? Supervisor Taylor? Aye. Thank you. Item 3.2, Solid Waste. Conduct a public hearing to consider taking action on protests regarding the number of units charged to residences or businesses for the solid waste annual parcel fees. No impact to the general fund, potential reduction of revenues in the amount of $100 per equivalent unit from the solid waste enterprise fund. Welcome, Dylan.
Good morning. Diane Ryder, Deputy Director of Solid Waste. This is our second public hearing on the annual parcel fee billing, and it's giving the public an opportunity to question any units billed them on billing that we sent out on April 17th. We have used a new billing system this year with a new data set, and we're getting a lot of questions, and we're trying to work through a lot of our changes just to resolve them without having to come to you with them, and they're just figuring out what the problems have been and translating the data. And we'll continue to do that through June 30. And other than that, if there's anybody else that wanted to present a protest for it?
Thank you, Supervisors. Any questions?
It's public.
Is it public? Any public comment? Supervisor Morris?
Oh, that's something to ask for later.
Okay. Sorry, I thought I tuned it up. So...
Thank you for holding the hearings.
Yep. Thank you for holding the hearing. Thank you. Trinity County Transportation Commission, 3.3, conduct a public hearing regarding potential unmet transit needs that are... Tina, could you finish reading it? Apparently, I lost it.
That are responsible to me, or reasonable to me.
Thank you. No fiscal impact. No fiscal impact. So, Rick, are you on the line?
Rick, are you on the line? I'm... You remember... You remember... You both can't be here. You both can't be here.
Can you... Can you take it off speaker?
Okay, again, this is a public hearing regarding potential unmet transit needs that are reasonable to me. This is something that we aspire to do on an annual basis, which is we analyze unmet travel needs, and we analyze these travel needs, and we make a determination whether they are reasonable or unreasonable to meet. And so, that's what we are trying to do, is ask about the potential unmet needs that we have out there, and are those potential transit needs that are unmet, are those potentially reasonable to meet? So, that is the purpose of what's going on. This period of the... Things that are different, and what we do for annually, like I mentioned, we've done before. First of all, this year, we had still COVID issues, and so we were not able to analyze stations that will take... We have actually... So, those were analyzed, brought to the thing, and as the Bayford, as the 24th...
Rick? That, I don't know if you have YouTube channel or something, but you're feeding back, and we can't really understand anything you present.
The feedback is in the phone, not in here.
I can get some feedback.
Somebody else has it.
Yeah. Rick, can you just hold on a second? Dr. Coons is gonna reach out to you, and we'll put you on his private line, and that way we can hear it better. Can you hold on?
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone? Please mute.
Do you want to take public comment?
We're not done hearing the report from the director. We couldn't hear him because of the phone. So, hold on a second. I'll see that one there.
Go ahead, Rick.
This is much better than the echoing that was going on with the other line. Again, I'll start over. This is a public hearing to listen to potential unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet. And what that is, that we ask the public for a list of transit needs that are not currently happening, like for instance, a bus ride out of Heinz Palm. We currently do not provide that service, and if someone asks it, it is an unmet transit need that we have. And then the second part of that question is, is this is reasonable to meet? If someone asks for a bus transit system out of Heinz Palm, given it a week, three times a week, is that reasonable to meet for budgetary capacity that we have? So that's why it adds potential unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet. Again, this is something that we require to do on an annual basis for our Transportation Development Act. We have been doing it, comes up every year around this time. Our usual process is we solicit to the public, which we have, anything that we receive, we send it through the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council, which is the STAC, to analyze the report to the board. In this case, this year, we had COVID restrictions, so we were not able to analyze anything on April 16th to bring forward. But I also want to comment that as of April 24th, we have received no comments. But the first one big thing going on, and the reason why we probably didn't receive any comments, is, is that we have an overlapping activity that is going on, which is the short-range transit development plan and the public transit human services transportation plan, which are coordinated plans. They're both being worked up. It's our five-year surprise plan for how we're gonna deal with transit. Those are things that are going on right now that are very active, and that will also be essentially mirroring this process, but with much more bigger, broader picture of over the next five years. So today's purpose is to hold a public hearing and receive any unmet transit needs, and then what we'll do is, we will have a follow-up resolution on the next board meeting, which we make a determination on those reasonable to meet, and make a recommendation to the board, and then the board discuss and adopts the resolution. So we did have some ones that were identified, any of these, short-range, that's been, that we're looking on right now, that left them in the, in the manual, and I can let you know what they are, so what they desire, but with, I can answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions? No. There is someone on the, for a public comment, Rick. We're gonna try to turn up the phone from the conference. If you can't hear, please let us know.
Okay, and I believe Public Captain is also there.
Okay. Polly, are you on the line? Hold on, Bill. Polly, are you on the line? Okay, Bill Burton, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Two, two little things. The unmet need of traveling from Downriver on the transit to Reading doesn't connect with any southbound connections like Amtrak. If you leave in the morning, you're in Downriver, and try to get to Reading before Amtrak leaves, Amtrak has changed their bus patterns, and so that's a, you're unable to meet any southbound like going Southbound, Reading or else, uh, Reading until you wait till 3:00 in the morning for a train. So that's, the unmet need has impacted me and other Downriver people. The other unmet need is that, in general, when transit is operating, there's lots of Caltrans jobs that delay the arrival time. And there, there is possibility of projects, projects coming up, and I was aware of them, there's some contacts, and it turns out that Caltrans can, will pay for delay of like 15 minutes or more, or if you miss a bus connection, or have to do something else to make your, further transit, that could be an expense of them holding us too long. And so that will be coming up as an evaluation over the next year, how Caltrans deals with delaying us too long on Monday, Tuesday night. And we should follow up on that, and if there is an unmet transit need when we miss our connection. So that's my thought, and hope you're all well.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Polly, I am on.
Hi Polly, welcome.
And I was having technical difficulties online, imagine that. So I couldn't hear what the question was, if you have any.
It, it was a comment that, two things, Downriver doesn't have a connection to Amtrak to, to Reading, like the times don't set up. And the second was the potential of Caltrans paying for delays or missed, which is something that Caltrans is looking at. I, I do not believe that the Trinity County DOT can weigh in on that there. That's an internal, but that is something that Mr. Burton was bringing to our attention to just have on our peer view.
And keep in mind that the Amtrak, you're gonna have to have a bus down there, what, at 2:00 or 3:00 AM?
And that was his complaint. So it wasn't really a question for you to answer, but we didn't know that going in. It was, it was a public comment.
Yeah, he was, he was mainly talking about the bus service that, that they run the buses during daytime, that's outside the train.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately, the Amtrak train doesn't leave at 3:00 in the morning, it's only goes, not something that they're often able to meet.
Right.
Currently, there are already any connections to, to Reading. But that's something that we're always working on, and the tough part is trying to make those connections with Amtrak and Reading now. So, but we'll definitely take note of that, and we'll include it in our Transit Development Plan as well.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Bring it back to the board. Closing public comment, and it's, we're just receiving the public hearing of the unmet transit, so we received it. So now we're gonna back up to item, I believe, 1.1, which is a proclamation. Let me ask Darryl. Darryl, can, are you good with us taking breaks?
Well, I think probably if you want to take a break, if you can, limit it a little bit, because I'd like to leave the stream going, because I don't want people to have to come back on, so I just leave it going, so.
Okay.
But if you want to take a short break, that's, I mean, that's up to you guys.
So it's 11:20, we'll resume at 11:00.
It would be just like they were sitting here, waiting for you to come back, so.
Yes.
Otherwise, I gotta, if I shut it down, then they gotta, they gotta log back on and help separate feed, so.
Those that are watching online and on the phone, it's, we're taking a five-minute break. Thank you. Board ready?
Ready.
Okay, thank you. Yep, thank you. 11:25, we're back in session, and we're starting with our proclamation. It's item 1.1, a proclamation, 2020, older Americans' month. And we're not reading the proclamation.
No, we don't need to. You would take public comment on it, I appreciate that. I can read it real quick if I really want to, and then once public, I'll make a motion.
Let me ask the public, public, please mute your phone. Especially whoever's moving furniture.
Stop sneezing on your phone.
So we're gonna, we'll take public comment on item 1.1. I mean, here it's heard none.
Motion to approve proclamation of the board of supervisors recognizing May 2020.
Second.
Thank you.
Were you ready? Sorry. We're gonna have to turn them down when you know.
You all know I make faces at you here.
I can't see you. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Bentley?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick? Aye, thank you. Item 1.2, adopt a proclamation recognizing the week of May 3rd through the 11th, 2020 as National Correctional Officers Week. No fiscal impact. Any public comment on item 1.2? Hearing none, bring it back to the board.
Glad we're doing this. So moved.
Second.
Supervisor Bentley?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick? Aye. Okay, another 1.3, adopt a proclamation recognizing May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and May 10th through 16th as, 2020, as Police Week. No fiscal impact. Any public comment? Bringing it back to the board.
I just want to make a quick comment, both on the last one and for peace officers. We talk a lot about healthcare workers on the line for COVID. These two sectors certainly are interacting with the public and are at risk too, so I want to thank them, both sectors, for their service.
Awesome. Good, good job. And I will move to approve.
Second.
Supervisor Bentley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes our ones. Now we're moving on to consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters, and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. A member of the board, staff, public, may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Board? Anyone? Staff? Any, anyone online or in the audience want to pull?
Yes, I would like to pull 2.1, the first one.
2.1. Okay, and who is up? Can't hear.
Diane Richards, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to mute myself.
That, that's fine. Okay, so I'll open it up for the, any other public wanting to pull any item. I don't hear anyone, so bringing it back to the board.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick? Aye. So moving back to item 2.1. Mrs. Richards?
Yes, would you like to comment?
Yes, please.
That would be great.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pacheco, opportunity, and I want to commend the board for getting this on the agenda and doing this. I know this long meeting had their reported office was basically just putting exams and not taking the money in the first place, it's been a year of this. That's particularly still for housing, what sort of bill to get to be from recorded documents regarding houses, et cetera, real estate type recordings, and it should not have fallen on our small claims miners. It was a big, you know, basically a tragedy, because I think many of them couldn't even afford that, it needed almost $100 to renew instead of $15 every year for each claim. So I commend you for doing this and getting on board. Thank you very much for all the small miners in mining districts in Hay Fork. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Richards. Bringing, is there any other further comment? Bringing it back to the board.
I'll move to accept 2.1. Yes, ready?
Oh, second. Thank you, Chair Chadwick, for also following up on this. This is kind of under the aisle as chair, we wanted it to move forward, so thank you.
It was a collaborative, and I will just say that Mr. Rankin, it was his persistence, so if he's out there, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, may I make a comment on this? I was having some technical difficulties and couldn't wait in.
Is this Mr. Rankin?
Yes, this is.
Yes, please, we were just appreciating your tenacity. Go ahead.
Yes, well, I just want to thank you for any support you can give me. It's been a long grassroots effort to try to correct, I believe, which is an injustice in the Senate Bill 2. And any support from organizations such as yourself, the board of supervisors of various counties will be helpful if I am able to get any movement to correct this, and I do thank you very much for any support you can provide.
Thank you, and we have a motion and a second on the floor, so we're gonna pull it. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick? Aye, thank you. Okay, I think now, we're, since we're doing the hokey pokey with the agenda, we're gonna go to 4.1, reports and announcements. So do we have any department heads? We're gonna, we're gonna ask the ones on the line to please, if you're on the line, can you state your name so we can write you down and put you in some kind of order?
Hello, Rick?
Okay, Rick? So far, you're the only one online. Anyone else online?
Margaret's online, but I don't have any report.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, so.
I'm Nelson is online, but I have no.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. So, and we have department heads in, in the audience, I don't know if any of them are gonna speak or not. So Rick, did you want to speak?
Rick Tippett, Director of Transportation. I just wanted to let everybody know that the roof is going up on the jail this week, and we're about to achieve our second milestone, which is the structure. From that point on, they'll be pulling all the wires in and taking care of the inside of the building. We do have a slight delay in construction because of some of the winter delays, and there's been some inefficiencies due to COVID situation. So the opening is gonna be put back months, about five weeks, and we're now looking at the first week of February for the turnover to the sheriff for out city. So just wanted to let you guys know where we were at and why the crane is there. That's all.
Supervisors, do you have any comments? Supervisor Morris has a question.
So Rick, I'm hoping you can hear me. So I think anticipating, anticipating opening day would have been this coming December, and now, did I, if I heard you correctly, we're looking at February 2021?
Yeah, we're still gonna be having a, having a very soft dedication opening before the end of the year, but there's gonna be some internal tune-ups, for better words, that have to go on before we can turn completely over to the sheriff. And that's just to make sure that we have everything up and operating at 100% when we do turn over.
Okay, thank you for clarification, Supervisor Rose. Thank you, Rick. Margaret and Shelley both have anything, so anybody present? Director Hunter, Kim Hunter? Come on in. Thank you, Supervisor Rose, appreciate that.
Good morning, Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director. I am, wanted to report this morning, and I'm pleased to report that we do have a general plan request for proposals, an RFP drafted, and it's been sent out to a few folks for review internally. It has not hit the streets yet. This is anticipating a, at least a three-year process, the budget of $1.5 million, mostly from the General Plan Update Fund, supplemented by some state grants, including SB2, the local, local early action planning grant known as LEAP, and the regional early action planning grant known as REAP. Hard to keep those straight. So, but mainly, yeah, the majority of funds will be coming from the, the general plan fund set aside, which has been paid with projects, building permit fees, development fees, and definitely cannabis licenses pay a large amount into this fund. So the RFP, the schedule is to get this out hopefully by the end of the week, early next week, and with the next week, and with the deadline for proposals by 5:00 PM on May 27th. So a pretty quick turnaround, it's ambitious, it is flexible. But are looking for just comments and, and any suggestions you have if we.
They're working on the roof as we speak, I apologize.
Big boom.
We don't have enough to do.
That was a sign, kind of dodged my report. Yeah, yeah, pretty much so, it was gross. So, like I said, I did, this was sent out for some comments before it hits the streets, including to each of the five supervisors, so if you have any comments or suggestions.
Julie, what are you talking about?
We're talking about the request for proposals for the update of the general plan with the environmental impact report and a zoning update as well, is the proposal.
We are on item 4.1, and Director Hunter is reporting out. If you could please mute your phone? Okay, so supervisors, do you, Supervisor Morris?
I don't have a question on this, but I have another question, but I'll wait.
Supervisor Grove?
So you're available sometime today after I'm done.
Yes.
Looks good, glad you know what you're doing.
I got a text from Supervisor Brown, and he's got a couple things he wants to talk about, so he'll contact you directly.
Right, thank you, and was there somebody on the public that, besides? Okay, I don't hear anybody.
Okay, I'm a member of the public calling in. I would like to have 2.2 pulled and voted on separately. I think it's controversial. My name is Jack Northland, we submitted a written comment, hopefully you all have it.
Actually, I got your letter last night, and it was item 1.2, I believe, not item 2.2?
No, 2.2 is the proclamation of the extension of the health emergency. And our position is there is no health emergency, there's not been one case in Trinity County. So the health department cannot, you can't have an emergency when, when there is no emergency. You, it is controversial, it's disputed.
Okay, so we, we have already voted on the consent calendar.
Oh, that's just wonderful. So you've extended a healthcare emergency where there is none? And you didn't even debate it, you just taken the money instead of representing the people in the county? It's terrible.
Public comment for this item has, has closed?
Now, you see, you should have an open meeting. You let the people in there from the departments come in. If I had been in there, I would have been able to speak. I can't, it's very hard to understand what's going on from the outside.
Well, sir, I appreciate your comment, but the consent item should have gone off at 9. The only reason why it was delayed whatsoever was the fact that we took a.
Well, I've been available all day, but I submitted my written comment thinking it'd be some consideration of it.
I read your comment, and we had the vote, and I appreciate your input, but if public comment on that item is closed and the vote has already happened.
Now, I, and you know, I for one, words have meaning, and emergency means something that's urgent. There is nothing urgent.
Sir, if you continue to talk, we're going to have to turn the phone off to everyone. It is no longer public comment. We appreciate.
It's a disgrace, it's a disgrace.
So I believe that Supervisor Morris had a different question regarding something else that we haven't reported on, if you want to give her the subject matter?
Yes.
So it's all right.
Just a quick update, when we might see the EIR gap?
That is going to come back for a contract amendment on the 19th, I believe. But we are working, or is continuing, Ascent is under contract, so we're making some progress. Just got feedback from a survey we, we sent out to the growers to get local data, and we've got the results put together in a package to review. So work is continuing, but then again, you will see an item on the, on the 19th for a contract.
But when do you see the actual document come back to us, or actually planning first?
Yeah, I will have, I'll have an answer for you on the 19th, yeah, or sooner, but, but a better answer, a more concrete answer on the 19th. I was supposed to go to this meeting, you didn't quite meet the deadline for the staff report, so.
Okay, yeah.
We'll get back to you on that.
Supervisor Grove?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Be safe and healthy. So. Interim Director, Ms. Hamilton, would you have anything to report out? You're all reported out, okay. Is there anybody that I've missed on the phone that came on late? Okay, report from County Administrative Officer Dr. Richard Coons.
I think I reported up to Supervisor Brown. I just also said if he has certain, he has stuff to report on, there are supervisors to report.
Okay, can he hear us?
I think I'll have to call him.
Okay, so let him know, yes, for CAO.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, Jeremy, can we take Jeremy real quick? Oh, okay.
All right, so reporting out on the 30th, we had a phone call about the CRP program. It seems to be beneficial, we talked about specials.
Jeremy, can, can, excuse me, Jeremy, can we call you on Dr. Coons' phone and not on the speaker phone because we're getting too much feedback? I think that is a yes.
Is it better?
Oh, that is much better.
Took himself off speaker.
Yeah, go ahead, we'll try it.
All right, we had a phone call with Mike, from Dr. Hunter and Gail Coons, Ben Finley, and the other reporting, the other was about a couple tow trains continuing to operate on the highway to keep it safe and accessible. I just get a lot of information that, that's just ongoing, continued work on the highway, also the increase of their DOD revenue. There was a fair amount of COVID season measures, all of the tow trains, staff members. I reached Scott's house, and they said that discussion with issues and that people were calling protocol on the way today, I didn't, I mean, specific protocols being followed, but nothing near as close as I know to those protocols would have to be look like. There's been increased concern over the McDonald's, efforts they're doing, lots of rocks are rolling across the road when they're letting people through. I know there's multiple people with puncture tires on both sides of the construction. Concerns are related to tow trains, and they responded with a 100 number for the claims for damaged vehicles. Other than that, the only thing I'm curious about is the sustainability from the local and the local for each type of bench forgiveness. I don't think I have any avenue of, for human, for those contracts, just putting it out there, letting landlords, listening, local landlords are able to be in a mission to offer to kind of forgiveness for, as much as I would say for that.
Thank you, that, it was very difficult to hear, and I, I don't know how that was going to work over live streaming, but that was a lot of information, and I appreciate it. Thank you for making the effort to call in, Supervisor Brown, appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to go backwards for a moment. Supervisor Morris had a question for you, Dr. Coons?
I have a couple of questions, but I'll start off with one word. Zoom. We really need to get on the Zoom bandwagon.
By Friday.
By Friday, it's so tough for the public to hear, for us to hear. It's, it's tough, that's all I got to say. But beyond that, I want to thank you and your staff for all your, I know you guys are behind pulling stuff together for COVID, and I also want to thank our state and federal representatives. I know they've been in discussions with our Health and Human Service staff, trying to move things for them along, whether it's the federal stuff under Congressman Huffman or Senator Brookwire, Assemblymember Wood, and also I want publicly to thank CSAC for them advocating very closely, daily, if not multiple times, with the governor's office to help small counties move forward too. So that's all, thank you very much.
May I make that, we have a lot of support from our representatives, starting from the board level all the way up to state, we had, and other counties too. We worked, we've worked with contrary, I believe, we've worked with other counties. I signed a petition of 42 CAOs for counties below $500,000 to assist in, in some of the funding, so it's been a.
$500,000 or 500?
Population or less. Well, I think we'd be the only ones at $500,000 or less.
Right, yeah.
But yes, $500,000 population or less, so 42 of us signed and sent to the governor to assist with getting those federal funds to the, to the smaller counties, because they're not coming in as promised. But yeah, we've had nothing but cooperation, I've been on the phone almost every day with the lawyer's office. They've been instrumental in, in working, giving us testing, so thank you for that.
Supervisor Finley?
I have no idea kind of travel, but if I understood Jeremy correct, we used to have, we either had our tour claim online so people could fill it out, or Fred Bay published it in the paper one time, I'm not quite sure.
Dr. Coons, can you follow up on that?
Well, we might, we might, might make our tour claim.
What was it, what did you tell them? It's a hundred dollar, he, he was referring to, that I think you're referring to is the tires, the flat tires on the road.
Right.
On our road or the state? It's the state. Well, that's not a deal.
No, I know it's not a, but I'm saying just make it available so people can at least file.
Right, yeah, just to follow up, I'm saying there's been a lot of rock, and multiple flat tires on both sides. So, Mr. Finley, now you're the doctor. Supervisor Finley, it, it has offered a great solution, so we'll follow up on that. Woo-hoo, okay.
That would probably fall under Shelley.
HR, Nelson.
Is it online, okay.
Yeah, thank you. So maybe we'll send that to all the supervisors, and we can put it on our social media or whatever we do. So Supervisor Grove?
No, out of county travel, I will just give an update, since I am a business that's filed for the SBA monies. Then after 20 days, when they said it would take three, I finally got a notification that they received it. And they'll, they'll work on it when they get to it. So there's, I don't know one business in a county that's received any money. I will say that there are people that are receiving their $1,200 if you have direct deposits on that money, is making it, so if not, I don't believe any of them made money so I'm making it.
Yeah, that's my experience as well, I suppose. I don't have business, but everything else is. Over the Zoom, the Continuum of Care, also CAP, and the Fire Safety Council, and Darrell, I saw your hand go up.
Just speaking of the mic a little bit.
Sorry, so it was over Zoom, I didn't leave the county. Continuum of Care, the CAP, the Three County Continuum for Community Action Partnership, and the Fire Safety Council. And I think that's it for me, so we're going to, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said no, I, okay, go ahead.
I was just addressing under his idea.
Yes.
But you're right, no, I didn't, county travel, I would just echo what Supervisor Grove has said, that meeting with, and talking with a lot of calls and meetings with business folks, they too have not received their federal funding on a variety of levels that they've applied to. That is adding to the stress, the concern about keeping their doors open. I think had that money arrived, that would give them a little more breathing room, and that hasn't, I don't know of anyone else who's arrived, whose money has arrived either today. Maybe tomorrow will be different, but as of yet, no.
So one of the things I heard on the national radio with businesses calling in, and I've talked to a few friends, was that if you have a local salon that you patronize on a regular basis, or a place you eat, to go and purchase gift certificates, because, and we start doing that, it helps them with cash now, and you get something later, unless they close, then you're in trouble. But I, I would encourage that, if you, if you have someone that, you know, if you're going to get a haircut, or you're going to get your nails done, and you know it, go ahead and get yourself a gift certificate, that, that helps our local businesses now. So, were you done?
I do have one quick question, this should have been under his report. I know we were looking, speaking of money, CDBG money, we're still waiting on that to try and help match any funds our businesses might draw down from feds or state. Humboldt Area Foundation, I do want to thank them, they raised $2 million to offer for our businesses to apply in a loan, I believe a loan and nonprofit. So there's money out there, it's just not, the bulk of money is just not hitting the ground yet, is where we need it to happen, and I don't think we have word yet, right?
No, that's, that's very frustrating, we've been trying to work with HCD and get the guidelines, because we do have funding here locally that we could get out immediately in the form of loans. Zero interest may be forgivable, but we don't have the guidelines from the state yet, we're just sitting on that waiting, and I've been in contract with, contact with our representatives to push them, they keep telling us, next week we're going to have these, these guidelines out to us.
I'll, I'll follow up on, on that, because at the COC meeting, there was about a little over $12,000 coming for COVID-19 reasons to the county, and I was told to give Dr. Coons and Susie Cockens a heads up, which I did, but we didn't get the important paper that had to be back on, by Monday, we were supposed to get it Wednesday. And I don't think we got it until Friday, and the due date was Monday. So a lot of these things, I mean, we didn't have it, and it was Dr. Coons and Susie, our grand, if we didn't have her, we would have lost out. Not anything we had done, just the fact that the, the way it's processed, they take forever, and then we get it, and we're told that they need to have it back or we're not qualified. So there's, for the public, that, that is incredible to have to have that kind of turnaround, and I applaud both Dr. Coons and Susie for not missing that vote, because that's over $12,000 to Trinity County, that would be new money compared to what the money we're sitting on, is that right?
This is specifically for COVID-19 homeless and rapid rehab, and, you know, however we as a county decide, again, cap related, so, so you're right, you know, it's waiting on the federal government to get it to the local level, but then the local level only has a moment. So, anyway, okay, I think we're wrapped up with the reports and announcements going on to county matters. These items include non-routine controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department, and member of the board or staff may request an item be heard out of order. Does anyone need to hear it out of order? No? Okay, item 5.1, adopt a resolution changing the term from grand jury members from fiscal year to calendar year pursuant to Penal Code 905.5.
Dr. Coons? Yes.
Because I thought we were going to have somebody here that was actually doing that. Sorry.
Do you, do you want me to read the summary?
Sounds good.
Seems pretty sound, since you volunteered, I'll let you.
It was, it was generated by the, by the courts, so, intended so, I have to apologize.
So I'll just read it. So Penal Code 905.5A requires grand juries to serve terms concurrent with the county's fiscal year. However, subsection B of the same code allows the board supervisors to switch the term of grand juries to coincide with a calendar year. Grand juries in Trinity County currently serve terms concurrent with the county's fiscal year, but this resolution will change the terms to be based on the calendar year instead of the fiscal year. This item is coming to you at the request of the presiding judge and court executive officer with support to county administration. If this change is approved, the current grand jury will serve another six months, and a new grand jury will be impaneled in December of 2020, or January of 2021. The con, the conversion of the term from fiscal year to calendar year accomplishes two things, the first being it gives the courts and the county more time to see what happens with the.
the current COVID-19 pandemic before impaneling a new grand jury and address potential issues with impaneling if the situation continues. The second reason is that June and July, when current impaneling happens, are very busy times for both court and county staff. Transitioning to a calendar year term would allow for impaneling to happen in December and January, which are traditionally less busy times of the year. Alternatives include financial implications, deny resolution. Department recommendation, denial of this resolution will result in the term of the grand jury remaining unchanged. This could cause issues for the courts in paneling the grand jury for fiscal year 2021 during, due to the current COVID-19 pandemic. It is staff's recommendation that the board adopt a resolution changing the term for grand jury members from fiscal year to calendar year pursuant to penal code 905.5. Are there any...
And we did the three...
Go ahead.
They gave us three alternatives, and I think it was the second alternative, which was to change it to the calendar year. The only reservation we had was it crosses over fiscal years, but working with the Otter's Office and Susie, they did think that would be a bigger issue, and the courts were the ones that really preferred this option.
Right. Any public comment? Move to approve.
Second.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Chappell?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown, are you on it? Thank you for wondering. Okay. Item 5.2, pursuant to the county fee waiver policy, find the Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department apparatus building project provides a benefit to the public and is not for the purpose of fundraising, and approve the Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department's application for waiver of the county fees waiving planning fees in the amount of $2,145 and transportation fees in the amount of $150. Potential loss of revenue to the planning department in the amount of $2,145 and transportation fees in the amount of $150. I do believe there has been a revision to this, so before we talk about it, could you present the revision?
Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director. On this item, there was an anticipated amendment to the use permit that would be needed, and that's what the fee reflects from the planning.
Step back just a tiny little bit, your mic is... Thank you for...
Usually?
Yeah.
People don't hear me. Sorry about that. So yes, the fee, so upon further review of that anticipated date of a use permit amendment, realized that the conditions of approval and the existing use permit covered what was needed with the additional structure on vacant barsel, and the conditions of approval were applicable, and other than a note to the file and updated site plan, there was really no need to amend the use permit. Therefore, the planning fees are unnecessary.
So that's good news.
But the transportation fees still...
The $150 encroachment fee from Department Transportation still applies, yes.
Questions? Clear as mud?
Transportation fees, is that for an apron, or do you know? It's not under...
Encroachment, yes. I don't know if it includes, I believe it's encroachment permit, but maybe Rick's on the line.
Yeah, see, they still want to keep that as a weight fee, correct?
Yes, yes, yes. So it's $150 for total weight fee. So is there anybody on the public side bringing it back?
Motion. Ready?
Yes.
Motion to approve as presented with the change of it only being $150 for the transportation fees.
I'll say. I want to make sure that's clear.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chappell?
Yes.
You want to ask Brown if he's on the phone, just to... Supervisor Brown, are you on the phone? So I'll read the closed session items and bring it to the public, and I believe we need to report out on the last closed session. Closed session, 6.1, Government Code Section 54954.5, parentheses E, conference with legal counting, existing litigation number of cases, one, Westlands Water District, five, all persons interested in the matter of the contract between the United States and the Westlands Water District, Fresno County Superior Court Case Number 19CECGO3887. Item 6.2, continued from April 21st, 2020, Government Code Section 54954.5, parentheses E, public appointment, Richard Coons, County Administrative Officer, regarding the April 20... Any public comment? Having seen them, will report out on April 21st, closed session, item 5.1, direction was given to staff. Item 5.2, it was moved to today, continued to today. That's it.
Close, you're going to close the closed session?
We're closing for closed session.
And you're going to report that next point?
And we'll do it at the beginning, hopefully, if you're here in time, otherwise, we'll just wait till the end.
Sure.
We thank you, everybody who's on the public line. We are disconnecting. Margaret? We'll call you if you can hear me. Do you want to, do you want to call Mar, or text Margaret?
Streaming is down.
Supervisor Brown, and let them know we'll call them in line.